Good evening. I'm Mike Widmer, Town Moderator. Welcome to the seventh and final night of the annual town meeting, 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the Town of Belmont. We have a lot to cover tonight. First, I just wanted to express thanks. Organizing a town meeting, especially a virtual town meeting, takes dozens, hundreds of hours. It's a huge team effort. I know you appreciate how much work is involved, but whatever you appreciate, which for which we're grateful, it takes a lot more than you can imagine. And I want to thank Ellen and the Town Clerk staff, Dave Pedo and the IT staff, Town Administrator's Office, Pam, Matt, Mitch, and lots of others who have combined in a major effort to pull all of this off. So, thank you all, and I'm sure I've missed some names, but it is a real team effort. We'll begin tonight as we begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. And now we'll go to the testing the devices. Come to my remarks in a moment. These are, as you know, test the devices. So polls are open, so just please vote one, two, or three. And if there's any problem, please call the technical line. While we're doing this, I should explain, we are going to immediately after this have two votes of Town Meeting members. I want to take your temperature. The first will be on the decision I made before this town meeting to go to three-minute limit on speeches. And I said at the time it would be a trial. So we've been through six nights, and so I'm going to ask Town Meeting their preference. Do we want to stay at three or go back to five? And secondly, we'll take a straw poll on the capital budget. As you know, this year, we, for the first year, we went to individual votes on categories within the capital budget, similar to what we're going to do in the operating budget later tonight. And so I want to take your temperature of Town Meeting and see if you agree that that was a good decision, or whether you want to go back to a lump-sum vote on the capital budget. I also want to thank, as part of our team, Jeff Hansel and Belmont Media and their entire crew have been helpful, very helpful, and they're really part of our team right from the beginning of these Zoom meetings, which, as we know, have now encompassed, I guess, three years. So let's just show the tally here and move on. So as I say, please call if you had a technical line, if you have any issues. And now let's go to the two votes I mentioned. So Town Meeting members, this is simply, would you like to continue with the current three-minute limit on speaking? Or go back to five? And so turn to the voting. Three minutes is enough, more than three minutes. The polls open. If three minutes is enough, vote one. If you want more than three minutes, vote two. As we've explained before, we need to wait for Belmont Media, so people who are watching there have time to vote. They have just joined us, so in a few seconds, we'll end the polling. All right, let's show the tally here, please. Wow. All right, we're going to stay with three minutes in the future. I thought there would be a majority. I didn't know it would be quite dis overwhelming. So thanks a lot for that good feedback. Now, we don't need to scroll at this point. Let's go to the second vote. And this, I mentioned, is the capital budget, which, as you recall, we voted in categories. I think there were eight, nine, 10 votes in all. Previously, before this year, we had one large vote on the total $2 million, $3 million capital budget. So let's go to the vote. If you want to vote in separate categories, as we did this year, vote one. If you want to go back to lump-sum, vote two. The polls are open. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls and see the tally here. So another decisive vote in just in separate categories, 177 to 37. So we will continue that practice next year. Great. Thanks for that quick feedback. We now go to, actually, we go to the proclamation. So we have a proclamation for Nava after 22 years of service to Belmont. And I'll turn to Mark Haley, Chair of the Select Board, to read the proclamation.
Mark Calillo. Mark Calillo, Chair of the Select Board. Mark Haley, that's fine.
Sorry.
Mark Haley will be up later, Mr. Moderator, that's fine. Too many Marks, I guess, perhaps. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Callo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member-at-Large. Surely one of, Nava is joining us, and we read this proclamation last Wednesday. It was read again today at Nava's retirement event. Incredibly well-attended, and it just speaks to the impact, the positive impact that Nava has had on so many individuals in town. She's worked with, you know, many officials over the years, worked on the senior center, but more importantly, from her point of view, is the impact and the positive, significant positive impact that she's had on the seniors within our community. And many of them spoke today about all of that. Nava, you'll be sorely missed. And I can't thank you enough for your years of dedication and service to our community. And having served for a very brief time in the Council on Aging and as its Chair, you know, Nava serves with a passion and a deep commitment to doing what's right by our seniors in town. And because of all of that, the board felt that necessary and important to recognize you with this following proclamation. "Town of Belmont, Massachusetts, Select Board Proclamation. Whereas, the quality of life in the community is enhanced by the commitment and willingness of an employee to give their time and talents to unemployment. And whereas, this year marks the 22nd year of Nava Nevogel's tenure with the Belmont Council on Aging, Beach Street Center, and the Town of Belmont. And whereas, Nava began her career as Director of the Council on Aging in August 2000 and had many accomplishments in her time as Director. And whereas, Nava has used her skills and expertise to make an even greater contribution to the welfare of seniors to promote the social, health, educational, and recreational needs of Belmont's older adults to age well than others in our community who are disadvantaged. And whereas, Nava was instrumental in the development of the new senior center, Beach Street. The center opened October 20, 2009, and then the fitness room in March 1st. Nava served on the Age Friendly Advisory Council in 2020 and 2021, and Age Friendly Action Committee in 2022. And whereas, Nava was a critical liaison to the Council of Aging Board in addition to the Friends of the Council on Aging, the funding not provided by the town. And whereas, Nava led the Beach Street Center team to help many seniors through the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Nava enjoys time with her family and friends, traveling, gardening, and cooking. And whereas, Nava is admired by all she needs for her professional manner, dedication, kindness, and extraordinary efforts in the discharge of her duties for the older adults of Belmont. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Belmont joins with the town in expressing our sincerest gratitude for all of Nava Nevogel's years of service and dedication to the citizens of Belmont and wish her continued good health and happiness upon her retirement. Select Board, Mark Calillo, Chair, Adam Dash Rice, Chair, Roy Epstein. Remember, in Nava, if we were all together, we'd be clapping. So I'm going to clap for you and thank you again for your incredible service to our community.
So much. Thank you, thank you.
You want to say a few words to Town Meeting? I know it's been an emotional day already for you, but if you, perhaps, Moderator, if you will, maybe Nava will say a couple of words.
Go ahead, Nava, if you'd like.
Thank you so much, Nava Nevogel, Director of the Belmont Council on Aging. I've said it to many, and I will say it again. It's been an honor of a lifetime to serve the seniors of the town and this community. I, as I said earlier today, I came to Belmont a stranger. And now Belmont is like home, and I thank you all for that. It's been an incredible experience, and I've appreciated how people with disparate points of view and passionate feelings on all sides can come together and do important things to the town. I'm very grateful to the Town Meeting for supporting the Senior Center when it was being, when there were many votes coming before it. And I appreciate the work of the COA Board and now the Age Action, the Age Friendly Action Committee. And I will hope there will be many volunteers offering their work for it, because I think it's a terrific body and so many people from different backgrounds that I think it'll be a wonderful, their work will be really wonderful. And thank you all for tonight.
Thank you, Nava. As Mark said, there was a wonderful celebration this afternoon for Nava's retirement and service over these 22 years. And there were all sorts of accolades from different perspectives of people who had been touched by Nava, touched by the service she provides, and touched by her personally. So, Nava, thank you on behalf of the Town of Belmont. You've been wonderful.
Thank you, Mike. Very special for me. Thank you.
We now turn to the preliminary motion. And you're familiar with this motion. This is part of the requirement to proceed under the legislation. So I will read the motion. "Moved that the Town Meeting will meet and act on all matters on the warrant for this annual town meeting by means of the video and audio conferencing and voting technologies described in the moderator's March 21, 2022 letter to the Select Board posted with the warrant." So now let's go to the vote, open the polls. If you support continuing and Zoom tonight, vote yes. Otherwise, no. Or abstain. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the poll here. Show the tally. 214 in favor, three opposed, one abstention. So obviously, we'll continue tonight. I don't think we need to show the scroll here. But let's go on to, actually, to my preliminary remarks and then the order of the articles. So a few remarks here tonight about what we're doing. This is, as you know, the final night of Town Meeting. This has been a long Town Meeting, one of the longest in my tenure. But we are coming to an end, but we have two very important items tonight, of course. One is the budget, and the second is the formation or not of a rink building committee. These are items that may elicit extensive debate. So this may be a long evening, but we are not going to adjourn. So we will complete action tonight on these two items, no matter how long it takes. I want to say, I'll talk more about this when we get to Article 8. We're going to begin, as you know, with Article 22, the budget. But I do want to say right up front, so you can be thinking about this in terms of Article 8, the rink, that the focus, the scope of the discussion on the rink is whether or not we form a rink, skating rink building committee. That's the focus. So anything around the design of the rink or around debt exclusion is outside the scope of the discussion tonight. So I just want to elaborate on that when we get to Article 8. But I just wanted to let people know that upfront, so if they're framing their remarks, they can do that within scope. Finally, I just want to add, in terms of admission to the floor, the following. The Permanent Building Committee, the Preliminary Rink Design Committee, Ted Galant and Sue Shalou. And I will see if there are any other requests for admission to the floor. No raised hands, so fine, we will proceed then. And I will turn it over to Ellen, who has two roles here, the reading of the warrant and the review of the procedures for tonight. Thanks, Ellen.
Great. Thank you, Michael. See, I, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. Do hereby certify that I gave notice of the adjourned session of the annual town meeting held by remote access, June 8, 2022, by posting an attested copy of the notice of adjournment on the Town Clerk's official bulletin board at Town Hall, the Town website, and at least five other places in town, giving notice that the annual town meeting had not been completed and had been adjourned to meet again, June 13, 2022, by remote access at 6:30 PM, briefly stating the business to be acted upon, all in accordance with Representative Town Meeting Acts of 1926, as amended in Section 30-110C of the General Bylaws of the Town of Belmont. I presume I can go ahead, Mike. Please proceed. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome back to Night Seven of Belmont's annual town meeting. Moderator Mike Widmer again has asked me to review a few key points regarding the technology and use for tonight's remote access virtual town meeting. And I have adjusted my remarks based again on what we have seen. Town Meeting members who neglect to sign into their personal Turning Point electronic voting account instead of when they see the guest account are not actually voting in the encrypted secure voting system. A week ago, Thursday, and again last Monday, on June 10th, at, sorry, on Friday, June 10th, at 12:25 PM, I emailed all Town Meeting members the Zoom link for tonight and the Turning Point session ID, as well as an instruction sheet, which is detailed enough to describe how to sign in and hopefully solve any problems that you might have. We hope that everyone will follow those instructions tonight and make it simple on yourselves. Town Meeting members, presenters, and some town employees are the only people in this Zoom webinar. Members of the public are welcome to watch on www.bellmontmedia.org or on the Community Access Television, which is Channel 28 on Verizon and Channel 8 for Comcast. This Town Meeting is being televised again generously by Belmont Media, and we're really grateful for their help. For Town Meeting members who are voting at home, who are watching the cable television broadcast, there will be a slight delay in what you see on the television from the live event, but your Turning Point will open at the same time as everyone else. So we ask you to be attentive to that. We will monitor that delay, and, but we do ask you to vote as soon as possible then once the moderator opens voting. Turning Point is the only way to be given attendance credit and vote routinely tonight. Town Meeting members will need, who needs technical support during the Town Meeting, should call our technology team at the phone numbers I provided again on Friday, June 10th, at 12:25 in my email, and realize that only two technology team members are there. So please be patient, and if you have to call again. We ask all Town Meeting members to be careful, to vote only after the moderator has declared that polling is open and you see the grid with everyone's names start to appear. Then please vote as soon as you can. Check your Turning Point device for the confirmation that your vote has been received. And it's a bubble for your voice cho, choice, your vote choice will be filled in. If no bubble is filled in, please vote again, and watch for that bubble to be filled in as confirmation of your vote. The moderator will give a fair warning when polling is about to close. A special note to those Town Meeting members who are using only one device tonight to both watch and participate by Zoom and vote using the TT Poll website. When it is time to vote, please double-check that you are on the Turning Point TT Poll window at the top of your screen, and it says TT Poll or Turning Point App, not Zoom, because Zoom, obviously, no vote will be counting through. In the event a Town Meeting member cannot get their Turning Point account to record their vote, the Town Meeting member should immediately utilize the emergency vote team who are standing by at the telephone numbers provided to you in that email. And then please call the technology team to solve the problem before the next vote comes up. Town Meeting members will not be able to share their video tonight. Everyone should be on mute whenever not actively speaking to the Town Meeting to avoid the background noise distractions. Town Meeting members who want to speak should raise their hand by clicking the Raise Hand icon at the bottom Zoom toolbar to be recognized by the moderator. Mike will recognize people to speak in the order in which hands were raised, and we will try to keep you apprised as to how many people are in line and who the next three people are. When the moderator invites you to speak, he'll do it so by name. Please unmute yourself, and the microphone appears at the bottom left, and identify yourself by name and precinct, just as you would if you were at the microphone at Town Meeting. I repeat, anyone who is recognized to speak, please start by saying your name and your precinct or your affiliation. You'll know that your hand is already raised if your Zoom toolbar indicates lower hand. And if you are dialed into Zoom using only the telephone number, please press star nine to raise your hand, and you likewise will be recognized and join the line. Town Meeting members who wish to make a point of order should use our Q&amp;A tool on the bottom Zoom toolbar by typing the words "point of order only." A staff person will inform the moderator immediately that you have a point of order by breaking in. The moderator will then call on you to speak. We caution you that if the moderator is already dealing with a point of order which has been made by another Town Meeting member, we will ask you to listen to the outcome of that point of order first before we break in with another request. If you do not have a microphone on your computer, please use the Q&amp;A tool on the bottom Zoom toolbar. Type your full name, precinct, and your comment or question. A member of the Town Meeting Q&amp;A team will let you know who of the Q&amp;A team will be acting as your proxy. Listen for the moderator to recognize that person by name who will, on your behalf, read your question or comment exactly as you have typed it. And finally, if the moderator asks for unanimous consent on a motion and you choose not to give it, you must immediately use the Raise Hand function or the Q&amp;A function to get the immediate attention of the moderator and the team. We'll be watching for raised hands during that time period, and if we see any raises, the moderator will instead call for an electronic vote. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Let's go to the order of the articles quickly. So the order of the articles, the Town Meeting will hear the motions in the following order, 22 and 8. There are no reports under Article 1. So with that, we will go to Article 22, which is the operating budget for the year. What will, FISCAL 23. What we will do here is Jeff Lubian, the Warrant Committee Chair, will read the first motion. There are 10 separate motions under the operating budget. He will read the first motion. I will summarize the votes of the various committees. And then we will hear a presentation from Jeff. After that, we will open up discussion on the first motion, which is general government, and then we will go through one by one. With that, Jeff, do you want to read the first motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Moved that the following amounts be appropriated for fiscal year 2023 operating budget and raised in the tax levy or from general revenues from the town. A, general government, $5,077,631.
The Select Board, the Warrant Committee, and the Capital Budget Committee have all voted unanimously on all 10 of the motions. So I will summarize that upfront, and we will dispense with the, that detail. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Lubian for a report from the Warrant Committee. And thank you, Jeff, to you and the committee for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. And tonight, I will be sharing an overview of the FY23 budget that is a summary of the Warrant Committee report that was sent out three weeks ago. I'd like to take the opportunity right now to thank my fellow committee members for all their effort and dedicated work on the Warrant Committee report, which I hope all of you at Town Meeting have had a chance to review. Next slide. So the Warrant Committee reports, this presentation, the back, will give some background of the process for the FY23 budgeting process and what shook out from that process. I will have the budget overview. We'll do the revenues by source. We'll have expenditures by department and by article that we will be voting on after this presentation. Two areas of focus that are very important to the operating budget, especially of late, free cash and the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds. We will have a slide on those to show where we are with those and the utilization of those funds. And importantly, and it was a common theme throughout our report, is looking ahead to Fiscal 24 and Fiscal 25 in particular, and the potential financial operating budget challenges that we see in the not-too-distant future. Next slide, please. FY23 budget process. So the budgets draft by the town and the school departments, all of what we're going to be voting on for the general fund exclude COVID-related expenditures. Those are outside, and we will highlight some of those expenditures because they are providing services to the town, but it is outside of the current general fund budget. I was reviewed by the Select Board, School Committee, and Warrant Committee with several, with numerous meetings that were public. The Capital Budget Committee gave their recommendations for capital budget appropriations, as well as the overall budget. Warrant Committee, Capital Budget Committee, Belmont School, Belmont School Committee sent reports to Town Meeting that you received, and we will have a presentation not only on the budget, but then on the school budget when we get to it in the article. Town Meeting votes to approve FY23 budget that we will conclude tonight. Next slide. So some high-level call-outs for the FY23 budget that I think the Warrant Committee feels is appropriate and important for Town Meeting members to be aware of, as listed, as described in the report. And Fiscal 22, there's elimination of town positions with the failed override. And fiscal 22, there's elimination of town positions with the failed override. Those positions were not restored in FY23 because of budgetary constraints. Those positions are police officer, firefighter. Two Department, Department of Public Works laborers and one residential engineer in Office of Community Development. Some of the impacts from those firefighting budget, we are also down positions and looking to fill those and then in the spring. Or currently filling those, but there was an excessive need to use overtime. Because of COVID as well as the short staff and down one firefighter and therefore that budget was exhausted this year and needed to be. Need to be increased. Department of Public Works, there were idle trucks during snow removal that our town employees were not able to utilize because we just didn't have the resources. So there was overtime that needed to be used there as well as outside contractors. And the Office of Community Development is tremendously busy. With numbers of numerous requests from boards and committees as well as public records requests. And just as losing this position just adds that much more pressure to the staff on the hand. For the final school budget fiscal 23. The, they ask, the original ask was 855,000 more, so we, the, the budget was reduced from the original proposed budget in February. By $855,000 due to, again, revenue constraints. 1.6 million is reallocated to non-general fund. So the school was, the school department was able to leverage its reserve, its special education reserve balances. And draw from those balances because they exceed the recommended threshold. And we've, we're drawing down $1.6 million of those, of those funds to offset. The school budget and not have to draw from the general fund. That's a one time, one time move because chances are that this fund will not replenish at that rate for years, for the next several years. That being said, 13.9 increase in FTEs for fiscal 23 to meet the needs. The demands and the, the needs of the schools and the students. I will mention that 22 FTEs were added in fiscal 22 to address the needs. Of academic and social and emotional learning after coming back from the COVID, COVID lockdown. They were, they, this is fiscal 23 will have its last year. And these are all being funded by COVID and ARPA funds. And once these funds are exhausted, there is no revenues to, to fund these 22 positions. So we will have them for fiscal 23. And again, a common theme you'll hear throughout this presentation as well as in the Warrant Committee report. Is that there's continued reliance on one-time revenues such as free cash and ARPA. Next slide. So fiscal 23 sources of the general fund revenue. So we have revenues projected at 148 million, 148.9 million dollars. Of that, you can see the largest portion comes from property tax, which here includes. The, the base of property tax, the, the allowed two and a half percent increase under Prop 2 and a half. As well as debt exclusion and new growth. Most of the increase here of 4.1% is coming from new growth. And we have an increase in debt. The issuing of the last tranche of the high school borrowing has taken place of about $12 million. That's represented in here. Again, that will be a pass through to, to the, to the debt exclusion for the high school. Next, we have state aid growing at 2.8%. Local receipts at 4.7%. Make up the next slice of the pie. And then you can also see though that free cash and other is increasing at 14.7%. And that's really being driven by a reliance on one-time funds. Excluded from this is water and sewer enterprise revenue. Those are separate and are handled within those budgets, those enterprise budgets. Next slide, please. FY23 budget of 148.9 million general fund expenses. So these are expenses that will be paid out of the general fund. On the revenues that we just, we just reviewed. So town operating, we can see has, it will increase 5.1%. A majority of that increase is being driven by higher energy costs. In particular, facilities handles all of the school. The majority of the school facilities needs, and that includes the cost of running the building. Which is the, the largest portion right now that increases coming from the electrics needed for the new high school. Obviously down the road that will be offset by solar, but right now. That is a significant increase and that's why we're seeing that 5.1% jump. If we excluded that, we'd be more about the 2.7% or so. School operating, the Chair of the School Committee will present in detail the school budget. But from the operating side of the budget, it is only increasing at 1.2%. And again, a large portion of that has to do with seeking funds from outside of the operating portion of the school budget. Capital budget, great news here is that we have a significant increase to 3.32 million. As was presented in the previous town meeting. A lot of it had to do with some turnbacks and some things break our way as well as the utilizing the sale of one of property. And so we finally have reached that magical mark of at least $3 million. And so you can see it's a significant increase. However, though, a lot of one-time events took place here to allow us to be at that level in future years. We could see us revert back to lower levels that we've had in years past. Chapter 90 is relatively flat or is flat. OPEB, a large increase, but we're back to what is the proper funding. We, for two years due to the uncertainty, uncertainty around COVID, we went to the minimum of $50,000. We're now at 580,000 or so. And that's in line with the guidelines, the policies that were set by the Select Board and the Warrant Committee some, some time ago. I have a separate line item here for fuel tanks that will be coming out of our free cash that was voted on the last, last week's meeting. Again, that's 600, about 650,000 that will be added to other funds to fund the overall fuel tank project. Increase in fixed costs, and again, a lot of that is being driven by the debt. There is a slight, we will see in a second here the breakout of that, but the majority of that is the issuance of the last bit of high school debt. And then you can see the total general fund budget increase of 4.7%. Next slide, please. So for fixed costs, the majority again is coming from, you see debt and interest. So we have fiscal 22 in red, fiscal 23 in green from left to right. And the majority is coming from again, the debt and that's just an increase, the last bit of the high school funding. Through the debt exclusion, there is a slight uptick in pension expenses to fund our pension out liability. And you can see vocational assessment went down year over year. As that came in lower this year for our vocational students. Next slide, please. A little more detail on the Boston Public School budget, we, our Belmont Public School budget. Again, this will be in more detail with the chairs of the school committee's presentation. But the general fund, as I showed earlier, is increasing at 1.2%. You can see the increase of 17.8% going from 8.5 million to 10.1 million. In grants revolving COVID and one-time funds. And again, that's going to be ARPA funds combined with. Using one-time reduction of special education reserves. To, to meet the overall school budget, which is growing at 3.1%. And is at 77.1. And it's important to keep that in mind because that is the budget at 77.1 million. That is meeting the needs of our school district for fiscal 23. With 66.98 million coming from our general fund that is funded through our, our revenues. Excellent. So I know this is probably a little bit of an, uh. Difficult to see depending on your screen, but this is just really the breakout of the budget. By article by the different departments, again, showing the relative size. So to no surprise, the, the school budget. Is the largest, largest portion of the pie, it's 66.9 million. You can see we have public services coming in next, public, and then public safety. Actually, principal and debt interest is, uh. Is sec, is second highest to the schools. And that's our fixed cost that we have to meet those obligations. And then the rest filters through the different departments and. And initiatives that we were going to vote on tonight. Excellent, please. Update on free cash. So as of July 1st, 2021, we had a certified free cash of 15.0 million. A lot of that, it was driven by several things. We had, again, another year of significant turnbacks. That are really being driven by COVID. And that being partially in shutdown and reduced services is that we were able, things just were not expended that would have been. If COVID, if the pandemic was not, not around. Also, some of you will remember that we were told and Representative Rogers mentioned this last week. That we, we assumed based on their recommendations. That state aid was going to come in significantly lower during the height of the pandemic. So we prudently budgeted for that. And it turned out state aid was flat to slightly up. And so we were. Because the budget was already complete and voted on, that money came to us and, and finally fell with free cash that you're seeing in this number here. For the operating budget for fiscal 23, we're proposing to use $5.96 million of free cash. I mentioned before, fuel tanks, a portion of the, of the funding will come from free cash of 650,000. And then we have our OPEB allotment of 580,000. That leaves us net free cash that will be sitting barring any, uh, uh, events. Of 7.81 million that could be used in subsequent years. We have a guideline that free cash should be somewhere between 3 and 5% of your operating budget. If we do the math there, you can see that it should be somewhere between 4.4 million and 7.55 million. And right now we're slightly above that, but as we will see in subsequent slides, there's been a high reliance on one-time funds. And this balance, although higher than our, than our prince, our, our guidelines will soon, soon be used. Next slide, please. So ARPA, ARPA was a year ago, there's a lot of confusion around ARPA because it was unclear about how, how much and what, how could we use the funds? There was numerous back and forth, and then eventually through some great work from our town administrator. Our representatives in Congress were able to get clarity around some of the. Language that made it difficult for towns in Massachusetts like Belmont to utilize the full allotment of 7.8 million. That was cleared up, I would say about August of last year. And since then, we are now able to utilize that full 7.8 million. Of that, and the 7.8 million is. Appropriated by the Select Board and clearly Select Board has had open forums to get input from the community. We do have to use all the funds by December 31st, 2024. And as of right now, 3.1 million has been appropriated through the Select Board. You can see the breakouts here. A couple of callouts of the larger ones, the Building Committee of a million dollars. That was to help offset the cost overruns of the high school project due to COVID. School ESSR match, this is to provide those 22 positions I mentioned earlier to help with academic catch-up and social and emotional support. And that's going to fund those positions for fiscal 23. And we're going to use only as of this year, 163,000. For the, for the operating budget. And then another source of funding for the fuel tanks will come, it comes from ARPA of 649,000 and change. Remaining funds, as of right now, as a plug, we're assuming a $2 million use in. The operating budget for fiscal 24, that's just a placeholder at this point. And you can see unknown future expenses. Again, that that would be the remainder, but as of right now, we have about 4.7 million dollars of ARPA that has not been allocated by the Select Board. Next slide, please. So a theme throughout the Warrant Committee report and various means of Warrant Committee and some of our other committees in town. Is this continued significant use of one-time funds. The fiscal 23 budget is our third budget cycle in a row where we will be using. Significant one-time funds of free cash that are above the average of about 2 million. That we have been using, utilizing for the last five years or so. So this is the third year in a row of significant utilization of free cash. In total, for the fiscal 23 budget, we're using 9.6 million dollars of one-time funds. To fill that gap between our revenues and our expenses. Which is, and that gap is called a structural deficit. 6.6 million is coming from unreserved fund balances, which is free cash. That's after using as almost 7.2 million in fiscal 22. Another 1.5 million of COVID relief funding. Again, this is for. Those 22 positions and giving the academic and emotional and social support needed after the height of the pandemic. And then I've mentioned this before is that we're using 1.5 million dollars of special education out of district reserves. So that fund built up, so instead of drawing from the general fund this year, they will draw down from those reserves. That is a one-time event as the, the reserves will not be replenished to that rate in the foreseeable future. So with all this said, continued use of significant one-time funds is honest, unsustainable. And the structural deficit will need to be addressed in the not too distant future. Excellent, please. So challenges for fiscal 24 and 25. And here's a list of a few, I'm sure there are more, but these are some of the ones we called out in the Warrant Committee report. There's uncertainties impacting the future, positive and negative. So further COVID impacts. One impact could be if COVID is another resurgence, there could be additional costs or loss of revenue. That we just are unanticipated at this point. We all hope we not see that again, but there's potential there. On the other side with COVID, we did have significant one-time turnbacks from schools and town and the town. Due to lockdowns and not full utilization of resources within both those depart groups. As we return more back, back to normal, we would assume those, those one-time. Returns would, would diminish to more historical levels of less than a million dollars or two, a million dollars a year. Compensation costs, I know there's been some recent developments. So we need to understand and digest the impact of the union contracts of the, as they are starting to settle. And what's the downstream effect on that, not only on the fiscal 22, fiscal 23, but more importantly, 24 and 25 budgets. Federal COVID funds, so again, those funds ESSR or current ARPA allocations that we're planning for the schools. Will be exhausted at the end of fiscal 23, excuse that typo after that. So again, those 22 positions are funded for one more year. There's no funds available currently for those 22 positions. And with the elimination of those 22 positions does not mean that those, some of those positions are still not needed for academic, emotional, and social support. All remaining ARPA will be needed, need to be used by December 31st, 2024. Per, per the statute. Chances are we will use all those funds ahead of that, but that's something to keep an eye on as we move through the years, the next couple of years, that those funds are use it or lose it. We still have extensive capital needs. We'll be talking about the rank, library, itinerary roof. You know, there, there's going to be continued pressure on the operating budget to meet capital needs, but there's also going to be. Potential debt exclusions that are going to be put on, on ballots for some of these larger capital expenditures. That add to the overall tax burden with a potential operating override needed in the future. Healthcare costs have been moderate thus far. There has been definitely a, a trend that normal health routines were not followed during COVID. As we get out of the, the pandemic and move into the endemic. The thought is that we might have more traditional health routines and that would add to the cost of our health, healthcare that we provide. Implementation on the positive side, we saw the report, the implementation of recommendations for the structural change impact group. So there's a lot to unpack there. There's going to be an implementation committee. And we could work those, has the potential for not only potentially reducing costs but increasing revenues. That will also in a positive way affect fiscal 24, 25, and beyond. And I would add, the only one that I left off here by accident is enrollment is an, is an unknown as well. We are down about 395 students. Due to the pandemic and other reasons. Is there going to be an enrollment bounce back and when? And that could have a tremendous impact on future, future budgets. Excellent, please. So the challenges continued for fiscal 24 and 25. In 24, I think we'll, we feel that we'll, we'll probably get through as where we stay, where, where things stay today. Again, I just went over potential risks. The funding in the operating budget will have 7.8 million of free cash. As of right now, we're assuming 2 million of ARPA. Fiscal 24 will most likely be the last year though, that we can have significant one-time funds plug that gap between revenues and expenses. The structural deficit. Fiscal 25 structural gap based on what our experience thus far in the last couple of years and what we're projecting. For 23 and what we're projecting potentially for 24 in terms of use of one-time funds. Those funds are not there. That's your structural gap. So as of right now, looking for anywhere from between seven and 10 million. And it will not be able to be fully funded by one-time funds. At this point, we don't know how much how much will be available. But one thing's for sure, that unless there's another windfall of one-time funds, which does not seem to be the case, action will be needed to balance the fiscal twenty-five budget, either through significant budget adjustments and/or an operating override to fund the fiscal twenty-five budget. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jeff, for a superb report. Mark Pilolo, do you want to make a few comments on behalf of the select board? And then we'll open it up for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Pilolo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at large. First and foremost, I want to thank Jeff Lubian for his leadership of the warrant committee and all the warrant committee members for their efforts around the budget. Having served there, I know how hard they work, the number of meetings they attend, as well as the capital budget committee. In the comments I'll make is that two things, one is I agree completely with Jeff and the unsustainable, you know, budget scenario we're currently in, I mean, it's just is not sustainable. We've known that for a number of years, and so we really need to get at this right after the town meeting ends. To understand what it looks like for twenty-four and what it what it looks like in twenty-five. And then second, secondarily, we need to talk about the budget process, how do we get ahead of it earlier this year and more comprehensively, perhaps budget summit. So there's a number of things we need to look at as the select board in collaboration with, you know, all of the committees in town, the school committee, warrant committee, capital budget committee, and and representatives from town meeting. So we intend to do that right after town meeting ends. We need to form an implementation committee as it relates to the structural change impact group, wonderful ideas, significant ideas that we need to really look to. So there's a lot of work to do even after we've finished our seven meetings tonight. So thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mark. We now open it up to town meeting members to see if there's any discussion on this motion.
Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the town clerk. At this time, there are four people with their hands raised, and in order they are Bob McGaw, Ada Baptista, Paul Looney, and Mike Crowley, that's the first four.
Great, thank you very much. Bob McGaw, you're first.
Bob, Mike, that's a mistake, I didn't raise my hand.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Ada Baptista.
Ada Baptista, I'm a town meeting member, member of precinct three. Thank you for that exhaustive report. I have a question, Mr. Moderator. My question is around the calculation of inflation and how that may impact our budgets going forward and potentially even.
The focus right now is on the motion on general government data.
Okay. I'm sorry, again, I thought we could ask questions about the budget, sorry.
No, this is on, we're now have the motion before us, general government, five million and change. PJ Looney.
Hi, PJ Looney, precinct seven, thanks, thanks, Mike. Again, this might be like oddies, maybe it maybe it should be asked later. Jeff, you had said the, I'm just trying to wrap my wrap my hands around COVID-related hirings that are going away with the money at the same time in the drop in the school population. I'm just trying to figure out, are we staffing based on existing numbers, staffing based on projected numbers?
PJ, let's wait on it. Have you raised that when we get to the school budget?
Will do so.
Okay, what we're doing here, we're going to have ten separate motions for each section of the budget. So this is for general government. Yolanda Eckert.
Good evening, Mike, it's Yolanda Eckert, precinct three. I have a question for the warrant committee based on the presentation. What is the net impact on the average tax bill that we anticipate for FY twenty-three? I know you talked about two and a half percent levy. The debt services, based on the report, it's going down a bit. I don't know if you have, if you have, if the team has projected that.
Well, that's a larger question. I will ask, and I, we're focusing now on general government only. But I will see if later in the discussion Floyd Carmen might be able to comment on that when we get to interest in debt service. Lisa Pargola, you're next.
Hi, thank you, Lisa Pargola, precinct four, town meeting member. I just have a quick question. Am I to understand that this five million and seventy-seven thousand and so forth is what's come from just the revenue coming into the town? Is that, is that what that number is from, just what?
Yes, it's part of the revenue coming to the town, yes.
Does it, so what I guess I'm trying to understand, is this the only number for revenue coming in is for businesses to the town? So what's our budget?
This is, we're dealing with the expenditure. So this is the expenditure of five million and change for general government within the town, the operating budget. So the Jeff Lubian went through the revenue sources, but now we're spending the money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So saying no hands, I'll go to a vote on the first motion here, general government. So if we could open the polls, and if you support this motion, A, vote yes, if you are opposed, vote no. And then we will go through one by one. The next item is employee benefits, retirement expenses. And then after that, employment benefits and other reserves and so forth. Which is part, all of this is in the warrants that you've received. Waiting for Belmont media. Just came on a few seconds for those who are watching Belmont media to vote. All right, let's show the tally here on twenty-two A. So two hundred and forty-two in favor, one opposed, one abstained. She can scroll through. Yes, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, when the vote is displayed and completed, we have a point of order from Ada Baptista.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baptista, you have a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I just need some clarification.
Identify yourself.
I I I lose. Adabti said, Tommy, you're seeing three. So, yeah, Mr. Moderator, I just need a clarification on your wisdom. I asked you when we will be able to ask questions about Jeffrey Lubin's and other comments? And then how, you know, just a general scope, just because, you know, I think my question, if you do this question, is they seem like printed questions that we would want to know. So I just want to know when we should, when will we be able to ask them? And do we have to ask them in the individual broken-out capital budget items? And I think this is probably the awkwardness, I guess, of doing this this way, right?
Yes, in other words, we have these motions one by one, and that's the place to raise them. So for example, school issues would be raised there under the school budget, et cetera. So health insurance issues would be raised in the next, well, item, I think, twenty-two C, but.
So my general question was around, you know, you know, inflation, which is the entire budget. So I'm just, I'm just confused when I would be able to ask that question.
Well, I don't, there's not a particular place to ask general questions. We have to be confined to the motions before town meeting. So if you can ask it within the context of something we're voting on, perhaps, I don't know whether debt and interest would be an appropriate place, depends on how you frame the question.
Yeah, I'll take a look at each each motion and I'll find appropriate praise. Thank you, sir.
Sure, of course, thank you for raising that issue. So now we have a final vote here, any additional vote, Ellen, no? So the final vote under twenty-two A, two hundred and forty-two in favor, one opposed, one abstention. We now go to Mr. Lubian to twenty-two B, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Move B, employee benefits, retirement expenses, ten million, ninety-two thousand and twenty-four dollars.
Thank you, so I've already reported the votes. So now we go to discussion of motion B under Article twenty-two. I don't see any, Julie Crockett. Miss Crockett.
Julie Crockett, town meeting member, precinct five. I'd just like to know what the current date is for paying off our pension obligation. And then if there's been any movement towards moving that date closer to the state requirement of twenty forty.
So Lubian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I will be honest, I I forget if it's twenty thirty-two or twenty thirty-three at this point.
Floyd Carmen, are you there, Floyd?
Mike, can you hear me?
I can, Floyd.
Okay, Floyd Common Town Treasurer, twenty thirty-one is our current payoff date.
And the legislation is twenty forty, correct?
It's twenty forty and the there's three hundred and fifty-one communities and right now, every community will be paid up by twenty thirty-nine.
Great, thank you, Mr. Carmen. Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, I'm just reminding you that you wanted Mr. Carmen to make a comment about the tax impact as well. And we have a point of order from Yolanda Eckert asking for that because she believes it's for the whole budget. Would you like to call on her?
She asked a question, so Mr. Carmen, did you hear that question? And do you want to provide an answer if possible?
Ms. Moderator, Floyd Common Town Treasurer, I'm not sure what the question was.
The question was the impact on the taxpayers of this. Miss Eckert, why don't you ask the question again, so I don't make a mistake in asking Mr. Carmen?
Yolanda Eckert, precinct three. Mr. Carmen, I just wanted to know the overall budget that we're voting on, what is the impact on the average tax bill for FY twenty-three?
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Common, that is a question that cannot be answered at this time. The Board of Assessors will set the tax rate in December as they do every year, and that's when the tax rate will get set for the year.
Thank you. Chris Grande, you're next.
Sorry, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Chris Grandy, town meeting member, precinct one. Has anybody, is there anybody on the call pension-related that could tell us that if the assumed pension return of seven point one five percent is not met over the next five years, what would be the impact on on the budget, on the on this particular line item for retirement expenses? Thank you.
Mr. Carmen, do you want to reply?
Ms. Moderator, Floyd Common, Town Treasurer, and a member of the Pension Board. That's a very difficult question to answer. We have a consultant actuary that would be a question that our consultant actuary would have to calculate. Let me remind town meeting members that when we ask consulting actuaries to do some work, there's a cost. But I will assure you, if the assumed rate drops, the unfunded pension liability will increase.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion, saying none? Let's go to a vote on item twenty-two B. Polls are open. Those in favor, yes, opposed, no? Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls, show the tally. So the vote is two hundred and thirty-eight in favor, three opposed to abstention. So let's scroll the vote, please. Momentarily, we'll go to twenty-two C. All right, thank you. That obviously pervades, whoops, let me put into the record here the vote again. Or did it? Two thirty-eight in favor, three opposed to abstention, that's the final vote. Thank you, so now we go to twenty-two C. Mr. Lubian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Move C, employee benefits, other reserves, including health insurance, insurance and salary reserve, seven million, two hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Thank you, we now turn to any town meeting member have a question or comment under twenty-two C. Chris Doyle.
Hi, Chris Doyle, town meeting member, precinct six. I was interested in understanding the thinking and potential progress toward joining the the state GIC for health insurance.
Doyle is asking, the GIC is the Group Insurance Commission at the state level, he's asking about that issue. Ms. Garvin, did you want to, or Jeff Lubian? Who should?
Sure, Mike, I can throw this. So Patrice Garvin, town administrator. This question, we have the town consultant, healthcare consultant on the call to be able to answer any questions regarding the GIC.
And would you like to, I've admitted her, but would you like to introduce her?
Sure. Sue Shalou works for the town, she helps us with our coverages, our coverage, our plans. She is somebody that the town will look to when going and moving towards the Group Insurance Commission, which is what we refer to as the GIC. It is the state plan, straight state group health insurance plan.
Thank you, Ms. Shalou.
Thank you. So in order to ensure.
Address, identify yourself first for the record.
Yep, I'm Sue Shalou, the president of Cooking Company Insurance Services, Inc.
Thank you.
So in order to ensure that the town of Belmont purchases their health insurance in the most advantageous manner, they do believe that the GIC, which is the Group Insurance Commission, they do believe that the GIC, which is the Group Insurance Commission, which is the state health insurance plan for state employees and also municipalities have the opportunity to join. So the town, in our conversations, does believe that that should be explored. But for various reasons, the town's position is that we should wait, they should wait until next year to do so. The GIC has recently issued a procurement for health insurance plans that would be effective for FY twenty-four, which would be starting July of twenty-three. Because of that, we don't even know what plans will be available starting next year. And those variables would include which carriers are going to be offered, the plan designs of the benefits that will be offered, as well as the rates. So in order to enter the GIC, the town would, for FY twenty-four, the town would need to notify them by December first of twenty twenty-two. We're not going to have enough information about the results of the GIC procurement in order to perform an evaluation to determine if, in fact, moving to the GIC would be in the best interest of the town, its employees and its retirees. In addition, the town would have to negotiate with the unions and meet that December first deadline. To do the analysis, to see if it's in everybody's best interest and to enter into negotiations, the town would have to negotiate contribution splits with the unions of the GIC plan types that the town doesn't currently offer. So, for example, the town currently offers an HMO and a PPO. But currently, the GIC also offers a point of service plan or a POS. The town doesn't currently offer that type of plan, so that contribution split would have to be negotiated. But this can't be done without knowing what plans will be in place for FY twenty-four. Depending on the plans that are offered and the cost of each plan, it could potentially make sense for the town to come up with a contribution strategy that would actually provide employees with cost-effective alternatives, just as an example. Some of those plans could be offered at a higher contribution than what the town is currently offered. But again, without knowing what those plans are, that exercise would be impossible. So at this point, the recommendation is to wait until next year and to enter or do an analysis and an evaluation at that point in time, once we know the results of the procurement.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Ms. Doyle?
Yeah, thank you. So that's helpful background, but could someone, I'm not sure if the consult, that's helpful back, Chris Doyle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, not sure if the consultant is the right person or if the town administrator is. I understand that it sounds like more information is needed, but in addition, there's a cycle for how long, how long contracts last. I'm not sure how frequently the state goes out for rebid. So one could imagine a process of kind of continuously being between contract periods and being between state cycles for rebidding. And given that there's the, you know, then a Belmont process, so I could imagine being sort of always in a in a state of imperfect information. So I'd like to understand kind of how the cycle for state contract bidding, you know, overlays with the cycle for the contract.
Let me ask Ms. Shalou that question.
Yep, certainly. So the tat, the GIC, yeah, Sue Shalou again from Cooking Company Insurance Services, Inc. The GIC goes out to bid every five years. I think they generally do a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. I would have to confirm if that's accurate. The town of Belmont has negotiated health insurance changes through Chapter thirty-two B, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one through twenty-three. So since health insurance is actually separate from union negotiations, it's extracted from the typical one fifty E negotiations, that can be opened up at any point in time.
Thank you very much. Michael McNamara, you're next.
Michael McNamara, Member, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to ask how we are doing with our OPEB liability. I know we put money every year into it. I'm wondering how we're doing some of the other towns around us. I know that Belmont generally has been pretty reliable. We put money away, we squirreled money away. And I'm wondering how we do, let's say, to, I don't know, Cambridge, Watertown, like, how are we doing compared to other towns?
Go ahead. Mr. Carmen, do you want to answer Michael's question?
Moderator Floyd Common, Town Treasurer. Michael, I try not to compare us with other towns. Every town's are a little bit different. As I said last week, we have a policy in place. We're contributing on average roughly about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can say that we're probably one of maybe a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five towns statewide that have an OPEB trust. At this point in town, at time, our OPEB trust is not mandatory, our OPEB contributions are not mandatory. So from a Belmont perspective, we're doing this on a voluntary basis, with keeping the goal in mind that, in my humble opinion, come twenty thirty-nine, twenty-forty, OPEB will be a mandatory, a mandatory contribution. As far as what is our total unfunded liability, roughly ninety-one million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. Hi, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien, Kishman, the Town Clerk. At this time, there are four people with their hands in the air. Lisa Pargoli, Bill Anderson, Vince Stanton, and Tommy Olson are the first four.
Lisa Pargoli, you're next.
Hi, thank you. Lisa Pargoli, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I was wondering if you could, someone could clarify what it means by salary reserve? And if we have one, and how much of that seven million will be going into this salary reserve, if if that's the case? Thank you.
Mr. Luby and Patrice Garvin, who's?
Thank you, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. So the salary reserve is a place that we hold estimations for settlement settlements of union contracts. Right now, we're in the process of settling contracts. So when we go from year to year, we have to roll over that money. So we will have money at the end of the contract to be able to fund it. There's also money funds in this account to deal with when employees leave or retire. By state law, they are allowed to have their vacation paid out. And instead of hitting the operating budgets of those departments, we we have money set aside in the salary reserve.
Thank you. Bill Anderson?
Good evening, Bill Anderson, Precinct Two. I'd like to know how much was our appropriation for this particular line item for the twenty-two fiscal year? And how much of that twenty-two fiscal year appropriation have we actually spent? I realize we're two weeks away from the end of the year, so I'm confident we we know the number by now, by now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrice, do you have an estimation of that?
Hi, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I don't have that in front of me. That's not something I have right now, but I'm, that's something I can easily get for Mr. Anderson tomorrow.
Thank you. Vince Stanton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vincent Stanton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I have a question that I think, I think this is actually a moment where Mr. Baptista's question about inflation could be brought into the discussion. The question is about postponing our decision on whether it makes sense to participate in the GIC until next year. I understand all the reasons that were enumerated regarding having better information about what the plans are and so forth. But do we, what if healthcare inflation, you know, I don't know what it is, let's say it's five percent this year and it ends up being ten percent next year? Does the town take the risk that accelerating healthcare inflation between now and when we would make a decision about participating in the GIC could meaningfully increase the cost of participating? And could that be a reason to actually make a decision now with incomplete information?
Ms. Shalou, did you have any observation on that? It's an open-ended question. May not be fair to ask you.
No, I can respond. Patrice, okay. Sue Shalou, Cooking Company Insurance Services. In my opinion, it would be risky to jump into the GIC without knowing what the plans are, because we have no idea what those costs are going to be. There's a lot of things going on in the healthcare market. So, for example, right now, for FY twenty-three, one of the health plans that's offered through the GIC is the Fallon Plan. They are pulling out of the commercial market. So as of this July, they're not even going to be participating. We don't know the impacts of them moving into the other plans that are currently being offered and what that financial impact would be. Next year, Harvard Pilgrim and Tufts are actually merging into one plan, point three-two health. So we don't know the effects of that merger. We did do a financial analysis, but the risk to the town is that there are so many plans that are currently offered through the GIC and all of your employees would have every plan available to them. So we don't know which plans they would enroll in. And if they actually all enrolled into a comparable plan to what you currently have, and again, I think, I think this is a very conservative estimate. But if everybody moved into the comparable Harvard plan, the town's cost would actually increase. And that's all based off of what's going to happen for FY twenty-three, because I hate to sound like a broken record, but we don't know what the plans are going to be for FY twenty-four.
Thank you. Next person's Tommy Olson. You there, Tommy?
Town Meeting Member. I just have a question. Ms., when was, is Ms. Shalou a consultant to the town? Or to Ms. Garvin? Or is she an employee? And if so, when was she hired?
Well, she's a consultant of the town. Ms. Garvin, do you want to answer that briefly? We're getting beyond the If you could answer it briefly.
Sure. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I can say that she is a consultant for the town and she was in place well before I I was here. And that was in two thousand and eighteen. So I can't exactly say when she was here, but she was here at least for the last four and a half years.
Thank you.
Roger Ruble?
Mute. Hi, Roger Ruble, Precinct Five. I'd like to move the question.
Mr. Ruble moves the question to terminate debate. Is there a second? Yes, there are. There are two people in line when he moved the question. So now the vote to terminate debate will open the polls. All those in favor of terminating debate, oh, yes. Opposed, no? Once we complete action on twenty-two C, twenty-two D is public safety. And then the twenty-two E is the schools. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls and show the tally. So the vote to terminate debate is one ninety-eight in favor, forty-two opposed. Obviously, more than two-thirds. We can scroll quickly. All right, thank you. Final vote, one ninety-eight in favor, forty-two opposed, terminate debate. We now turn to the motion itself under Article twenty-two C. If you support this motion, yes. Oppose, no. We'll open the polls. And go ahead and vote. A few more seconds. All right, let's show the final vote on twenty-two C. Two hundred and thirty-eight in favor, three opposed, three abstentions. So we'll scroll through this. And then, as I say, we'll do public safety. When we get to schools, we'll hear a report from the Meg Moriarty, the Chair of the School Committee. All right, final vote, two thirty-eight in favor, three opposed, three abstention. Twenty-two D, Mr. Luby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Luby, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move D, Public Safety, thirteen million four hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Any discussion of this motion? Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien, Kishman. At this time, two people have their hands raised, Aaron Picalingas and Michael McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. Picaligas.
Aaron Picaligas, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I just wanted to ask if someone could explain what the staffing of the police in this budget are versus the the desired number.
All right, the police budget.
My desire number, I guess, I like the number recommended for our population.
Who would like to answer that question? Mr. Luby or the police chief or?
It's Moderator, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I think the police chief would be best to serve to answer this question.
Chief, Mr. McIsaac?
I'm Mr. Moderator. Police Chief James McIsaac. So we were, we were budgeted for forty-nine. After the failed override, our budget number became forty-eight. Our actual staffing has been, we've been operating with four vacancies. In addition to the four vacancies, we have two officers who are on national guard duty. We expect to get one back later this month and one back in September. And in addition to that, we have a long-term, we have an officer who is out with a long-term injury. So that's basically where our staffing stands. At this point, we have two, three anticipated retiring, offices retiring in January twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Michael McNamara?
Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to ask Police Chief McIsaac. about some of the concerns or basically, I want to ask him if our funding is sufficient to have the police respond in an emergency situation in a rapid fashion. I know that we've all heard a lot about violence in various places with guns and in school concerns. So I was hoping that we, I want to ask him if he's been, if he feels that the budget is sufficient, both in the police department and also maybe in the school budget to make sure that there could be a rapid response in case of an emergency, because we're all, I think, very concerned about our schools and our public safety. Thank you.
Chief McIsaac.
Chief James McIsaac. Yes, the, the funding is sufficient. What we will do is we will always patrol is the heart and soul of the police department. And so with our vacancies, what we've done, we've had a vacancy in detective. We've had vacancies in the traffic position. But we're always putting resources to our patrol division for the purposes that you just spoke of, so that we can recall, we can respond to emergencies quickly and timely and efficiently. And I'm satisfied that we can do that. It does, the vacancies do put a stress because we have officers working more hours, double shifts, some events triple shifts, but you know, we'll get through that and hopefully we'll be filling the vacancies in the next year.
Thank you. Chris Doyle.
Thanks, Chris Doyle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, a member of the Warrant Committee. I just wanted to connect the dots a little bit between after the operating override failed. A couple of years ago, the Select Board, I believe, created the Structural Change Group, which put out that very large report and has examined about 400 suggestions that members of the public put in. And they had a waiting system of their suggestions after they analyzed them exhaustively. And the number one suggestion that had the highest value ranking in their waiting system out of nearly 400 suggestions was revisions to the civil service system. So I just wanted to make sure that Town Meeting Members kind of connected the dots between that report and the ranking of those suggestions and the town's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Barry Gaiman.
Barry Gaiman, Precinct 5. I, I just wanted to understand on the first slide aside in the beginning presented by Mr. Lubian seemed to indicate that the failure of the override, which was supported by 60% of the town voting, was the cause of the vacancy not being filled in the police department. But that doesn't seem to correlate with what the Police Chief just said.
Mr. Lubian, did you want to comment or the Police Chief?
I.
By all means, I think the Police Chief should.
All right, Chief McIsaac.
Police Chief James McIsaac. So the vacancy, yeah, the four, the number 49 was reduced by one to 48. Those four vacancies that I spoke of, so at the time of the override, we had four vacancies. When that position was lost, we went to fill three vacancies. We've had somebody leave since, so we have another vacancy. So that's four. If the override had passed, I, I guess I'd be in the, the process of trying to fill five vacancies. One thing to understand about staffing, just as in the police department only I'm going to speak of, the lower you go in staffing and, and the less opportunity you have to fill positions. It's, it's, I think, once in, in the last 15, 20 years, we've been fully staffed. And it's, it's a challenge right now. As, as somebody mentions, a lot of people not interested in working in public safety. There are restrictions with civil service that make it difficult for us to hire. And you know, we're trying to fill those vacancies, but we, we would, we would like to be at 49 as a budgeted number.
Thank you. Chris Doyle, did you raise your hand again? Or is it? I guess not.
Sorry, no, I, it was, yeah, sorry.
Ada Baptista.
Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, it's Mark Palillo is next in line, please.
Pardon me, I missed you, Mark.
That's okay, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much, I'm Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member. At large, I wanted to just comment briefly on a couple of matters. First and foremost, to Michael McNamara's question about, in particular, school safety. We have met, I as Chair have met with Chair of the School Committee and the School Administration and the Chief and Assistant Chief to discuss the school safety a couple of weeks, weeks ago. And we made our commitment, the Select Board made our commitment there along with the Town Administrator, and I made it publicly as well, that to the extent that there's a needed security measures, technology or whatever it may be, that the Board is behind that and will support that. We still have offer funds we haven't fully allocated. And certainly, so if there's a need there, and I know that the School Administration are looking at this very closely along with the School Committee. So we are fully committed to ensure that the schools have whatever they need from a safety perspective. As it relates to civil service, it certainly is still top of mind of the Select Board. Mr. Doyle, I know you asked that question and we'll keep it top of mind. And, and we certainly do believe, all three of us, that at some point, we do need to consider leaving civil service and we need to sort of work through that in a collective bargaining way. And then finally, Mr. Moderator, if I might, on inflation, because we do look at this. We look at that as it relates to our current contracts and where they may be. And I mentioned at the top of the presentation here on budget, that over the summer months and early fall, we will be meeting in collaborative way with the School Committee, Warrant Committee, couple Budget Committee, yourself as well, Mr. Moderator, School Administration, Town Administration, to really begin the process of looking at our 23 budget. And I think inflation needs to be in there as well from a consideration perspective. So we don't ignore it. We certainly know that has an impact on our cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palillo. All right, no other hands. We'll go to a vote under 22D, Public Safety. We'll turn to the polls. Open the voting. If you support, oh yes, opposed, no, of course.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. This is Nancy Casalli of the Town Clerk's Office.
Yes, Nancy.
We have a point of order from Mary D. Lewis of Precinct 1.
Yes, Mary, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Mary Lewis, Precinct 1. I thought Mr. Baptista was in line. Was he in line to call the question?
He lowered his hand, so he was not in line.
I see, I thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. So the final vote under 22D. 239 in favor, one opposed, no abstention. Scroll the results here. All right, thank you very much. I think we may have an additional vote. Well, just wait a couple more seconds here to see if we do. We do have one more vote. Thank you for your patience. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman with an emergency vote on Article 22, Motion D. Evelyn Gomez, who actually apparently had an electronic vote, would like to switch. So her final vote is yes.
Oh, all right, thank you. And.
From no.
From no, all right. So the final vote.
And we have.
We have one more, so we'll wait here.
On also Article 22, Motion D, Carol Williams, Precinct 3, voted yes.
So the final vote under 22D is 241 yes, zero opposed, zero abstained. All right, thank you. We now go to the Belmont Public Schools, 22E. And turn to Meg Moriarty, the Chair of the School Committee. Meg, can you read the motion first?
Moved Belmont Public Schools, $66,982,926.
And what is the vote of the School, the School Committee?
Unanimously in favor, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. So go ahead and make your presentation and thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, before I begin, do I just say next slide or skip slide and that will be?
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Meg Moriarty, Chair of the Belmont School Committee, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 2. I'm pleased to be presenting the fiscal year 23 budget for the Belmont Public Schools this evening on behalf of the Belmont Public School Committee and School Department. I know that you are all familiar with the budget numbers in the Town Meeting Packet. But what may not be familiar are the extraordinary stories from the 2021-22 school year that really set the stage for the work that must happen in our district in fiscal year 23 in order to meet the needs of all our students. So tonight, tonight's presentation is entitled Belmont by the Numbers. But it's really the stories that I want to tell you behind the numbers of all the extraordinary work that took place this year, above and beyond what we all think of as school. First, some thank yous. As has been true for many years, it takes a village. Or in the case of our Belmont Public School students, it has taken dedicated support from our families and staff to provide normalcy for our students this year. The School Committee and School Department is deeply thankful for the ongoing support of organizations and volunteers who help to support our schools and our educational programming every day. These partners put in countless hours to support our staff and students. And this year, with the urgency to ensure that all students are supported, known and engaged in these challenging times, the leadership of Belmont Against Racism, the Belmont Human Rights Coalition, Belmont Educators of Color and Allies, and the Belmont Wellness Coalition is especially appreciated. So what has this year looked like? The COVID-19 pandemic brought many challenges and uncertainties into the lives of students in grades K through 12, including mental and physical health concerns, disruptions in social connections and worries about catching COVID-19 or complying with restrictions, uncertainties about the future and academic challenges. But despite these challenges, there have been aspects of normalcy in the last year as students return to school in September and they will complete their first full year of safe in-person learning in three years. And by many standards, the Belmont Public Schools have much to celebrate this year, including excellent rankings and championship sports teams. Our students are still striving and they are still producing the excellent results that they always have. As a School Committee Member and a parent of two students in the Belmont Public Schools, I have attended many in-person award ceremonies and theater and music performances in our brand new high school auditorium, as well as sporting events in the last year. And I can attest to the joy that is shown by the students who are together again with their peers in person, supported by the whole community. But this year, the first in three years that students have been back learning in person has been far from what we know is normal. On top of providing 180 days of academic continuity to over 4,000 students this year, the Belmont Public Schools are operating above and beyond with help from the one-time federal funds. So I will now turn to the specific work that has been done in our schools over the last 12 months to create and maintain a safe learning environment for all students and staff, to identify students' academics and social emotional needs and address them, and to acknowledge, confront and take action on the issues of race, equity and inclusion. And here is where I hope to provide you with some of the extraordinary stories behind the budget numbers. Health and medical work. Public schools have become places for addressing pandemic-related public health concerns. Our school nursing staff has shouldered enormous COVID-related responsibilities on top of their regular roles. As a parent, I woke up 10 minutes early each Wednesday to swab my kids' noses and log their COVID pool testing information. And as a School Committee Member, I've become very aware of how much time on top of regular teaching and learning in our schools has been dedicated to keeping our students and staff learning in person safely this year. In the last year, our dedicated nursing staff of just nine nurses bagged every one of the 42,382 nasal swab kits, ensuring each bag had instructions, a swab, a tube and a return bag. Then these bags were hand-delivered to classrooms every week and our teachers dedicated classroom learning time to handing bags to the students. The following day, teachers collected these bags and nurses processed them. And if a sample tested positive, nurses spent their afternoons alerting families. So obviously, nurses added much more to their regular work week than just the 10 minutes that I added to my routine. And what about the routine vision testing? Giving inhalers to kids with asthma? Medication for children with diabetes and ADHD? Or those daily bumps and bruises that need Band-Aids? Our nine nurses had to do this too. I want to take a moment to thank the Belmont Health Department and CIC for their support and their partnership in the last year. And as a community, I think we should be proud of the high vaccination rates in all our schools. But the work and the time of just nine nurses that has gone into keeping our students in school this year safe and healthy cannot be summed up in just any one number. It is just one of the important stories that needs to be highlighted to better understand our budget. Because our budget is about staffing our schools to meet the needs of our students as they return to in-person learning after two years of disrupted learning from home. We have never had to consider this in a budget before. Academic recovery. Across grades since 2019, when students were forced to learn from home, more than double the number of our students are struggling to meet grade level expectations in math. Comparing the 2019 MCAS scores in math to those from 2021, the number of students in grade five who partially met or did not meet grade level expectations more than doubled from 18% to 42%. Likewise, the number of eighth grade students below grade level expectations more than doubled from 19% to 41% over the same two-year period. These results came on the heels of disrupted learning for two years. In fiscal year 22, we relied on one-time federal funds to provide targeted summer programming, tutoring services and temporary math coaches. And as you, as you have seen in our fiscal year 23 budget, we will continue to use one-time funds to support academic recovery with math specialists. The School Committee believes that with the right supports and adequate resources, students can get to where they need to be academically. But the one-time funding will go away after this year and the road to recovery may be longer than where those funds are able to take us. Mental health support. In addition to academic recovery supports, Belmont Public Schools have been struggling all year to get kids the mental health and behavioral services they need. In the last year, our district has referred more kids for mental health treatment than ever before. Our educators and administrators report students behaving younger than their age or struggling with more aggressive and violent emotions. The results of the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey revealed painfully concerning mental health disorders among our youth that are consistent with the rise in mental health disorders among youth across America since the start of the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, the Channery had one social worker and the high school had none. So in fiscal year 22, we used one-time federal funds to hire five social workers for the high school and middle school, which carry over into fiscal year 23. So why are we including one additional mental health professional at the high school in our fiscal year 23 budget? Well, currently, one of the social workers at the high school carries a caseload of more than 50 students. So what does this mean? During one week, this social worker is able to see a student who needs mental health support for just 36 minutes. This does not reflect the time that the social worker must use to meet with classroom teachers, communicate with parents and complete required paperwork. So like our nursing staff, our social workers must provide mandated services also. The demand for social workers is greater than what the district is able to provide and the School Committee recognizes that the temporary federally funded positions will go away when the federal funds go away. But the mental health needs of our students are not going to end just because the fiscal year ends. But the mental health needs of our students are not going to end just because the fiscal year ends. So we added one mental health professional to our general fund Fiscal Year 23 budget, which reflects the need to build some infrastructure to continue these needed and required services. My final narrative to mark the Fiscal Year 23 budget is really just the beginning of many chapters that I look forward to because they are long delayed. The Belmont Public Schools Equity Audit is the most comprehensive effort in Belmont Public School history to survey stakeholders and gather input from members of the community. All of the equity audit documents are online, and you can check out the work at our new DEI website. As a parent of students at the Channery, I read the principal's weekly email every Sunday night, stories of how administrators and teachers have been addressing racially biased, homophobic, and anti-Semitic incidents all year. Just a few weeks ago, five students of color found racist graffiti on a swing set at the Channery. These children expressed hopelessness, wondering whether such occurrences will ever stop happening. And I looked back through the emails to one from October 17, alerting the community to hateful graffiti in the bathrooms. Knowing these acts keep repeating themselves over the last seven months, I understand why these young students of color are wondering whether they will ever feel a sense of belonging and value. And so this story must continue. In Fiscal Year 22, the district hired its first DEI director and completed the equity audit work. We used federal funds to support staff for our MEKO students. But we need to be planning for the work ahead of us in order for our district to be at a place where all students feel a sense of belonging. I will now turn to an overview of the Fiscal Year 23 budget process. The four areas that I just narrated for you reflect the priorities of the School Committee and the School District as we built the Fiscal Year 23 budget. Since September 2021, the schools have engaged in a thorough, rigorous budget process and built a budget that supports both the bread and butter educational goals as well as the emerging needs brought forth by the pandemic and two years of disrupted learning from home. The budget process was collaborative. We've centered the needs of students, and the Fiscal Year 23 budget will maximize federal funds and conserve taxpayer resources. As Town Meeting Members, you have been able to review the Fiscal Year 23 school budget documents that were submitted by the School Department and Committee. And our entire budget is also on the district website, and this presentation will be posted. I just realized I haven't been saying next slide, but somebody's following me. I apologize for that. As this slide shows, there are live links. And in addition, we have an appendix that it's included. Can you please go to Slide 18? Are you able to go to Slide 18 in the appendix? No? Okay.
We're getting there, Meg. Hang on one second.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize that I wasn't saying.
No, we have all of the slides together, so 18 to you means nothing to us. We're just getting there. Hang on.
I think it's the next one. I apologize that they weren't numbered. But as you go through the appendix, that's okay. You will see that in working with the Warren Committee, the Capitol Committee, and the Select Board, and after listening to the feedback from last year, there were clearly topics, including headcount, that the community requested we look more clearly into. So for example, one of the tables that is shown to you on Slide 18 in the appendix that will again be posted after this presentation will show more detail about how our budget is distributed within the big general fund dollars by category, job function, and funding sources. I was hoping to go back to Slide 14 at this point. This slide shows just the Fiscal Year 23 General Fund Budget. Sorry about that. Can you go back to Slide 14? It's the Fiscal Year 23. One before that. Next one. Right there. Thank you. So this slide shows just the Fiscal Year 23 General Fund Budget of $66,982,926, which is an increase of 1.17% over the Fiscal Year 22 General Fund Budget, which is a much smaller percent change than last year. I want to thank Town Meeting for their vote last June to support our schools and our staff and thereby all of our students in Fiscal Year 22. Again, the additional 5.2 positions that are reflected in the Fiscal Year 23 budget align with the areas of need that I touched on this evening, including mental health and academic recovery specialists, specifically two behavioral specialists to be shared across four elementary schools, one math specialist at the Channery, one mental health professional at the high school, and a hallway monitor. And if you go to the slide just previous to that, this slide shows the district's Fiscal Year 22 and 23 operating budgets, as well as the supplemental federal funding that the school district has taken advantage of, as well as the change of number in full-time equivalent positions in the district. As you can see, the highlighted general fund line, which is what we are voting on tonight, we are only seeking a 1.17% increase in Fiscal Year 23. I want to acknowledge, as you've heard throughout my presentation and from Jeff Lubian earlier, that the only reason this is possible is because we will continue to lean heavily on federal fund money to supplement our general fund budget in Fiscal Year 23. When we move to Fiscal Year 24, as I've also stated many times this evening, we anticipate many of the student needs will still be there, even though the funding will be gone. We will also have staffing and resource needs associated with the reconfiguration work in Fiscal Year 24 and 25. Again, I want to note that when these slides are posted, you will be able to go through the appendix slides where we provide many tables of the information on staffing. You could go down to the motion slide, please. Two more. Perfect. This concludes my presentation. I respectfully request that Town Meeting approve the proposed Fiscal Year 22 budget of $66,982,926. I also want to express deep gratitude to Town Meeting members and to the community at large for its ongoing support of the Belmont Public Schools. The School Committee is committed to careful management of our budget in the next year, and we are really committed to building a multi-year budget for the Fiscal Year 24 and 25 as we need to plan for the future fiscal realities of our town. I will echo last year's School Committee Chair Amy Checkaway, and I will again say that I look forward to meeting with all of you in person next year in our new high school auditorium. I want to thank you for your time tonight and for bearing with me, because I obviously did not advance the slides correctly. And Superintendent John Phelan and the School Department Director of Finance, Tony DiColigero, are on hand, as well as myself, to help answer your questions.
Thank you, Meg. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. I thought Meg did a great recovery there, so. There are 10 people in line with their hands raised. It's Erica Zidel, Ada Baptista, Mary Lewis are the first three.
Great. Erica Zidel, you're first.
Hi, thank you. Erica Zidel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. First off, thank you for that presentation. It was very detailed and informative, and I especially appreciated the emphasis on mental health. I really believe that the purpose of our schools is not just to educate our children academically, but also to raise balanced people who are ready to face the world. So I think, you know, mental health and emotional support is incredibly important. But my question is about funding, and specifically around our staffing level. I know we're looking to add FTEs, and that's wonderful. I know we have very constrained class sizes. My question is, what is our optimal staffing levels for the schools? And how does that compare to what we're proposing? So I know we're going to, we're looking to increase staffing, but what is, you know, given, given an ideal budget, where would we be at for our schools?
Thank you.
Sorry?
Go ahead, Meg.
Meg Moriarty, School Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Erica, the School Committee and the School Department is always looking at enrollment numbers and having those discussions. Last year, we made reductions at the lower grade levels based on enrollment. I'd like people to remember that there was no decrease at the high school, so we did not make any decreases there. This year, and for this particular budget, we are staffing based on student needs, which for us this year meant outside of classroom teachers. And Superintendent Phelan or Mr. DiColigero, if you have more to add to that, please.
Thank you, Meg. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. Erica, at the elementary level, for grades K through 2, we aim for 22 students or below. That's a school committee guideline. And we aim for up to 24 students in a classroom in grades 3 and 4. At the middle school and high school, we would prefer to have class size be roughly around 24 students at the maximum. Our elementary class sizes at the moment are in good shape. Our middle and high school class sizes would run to be on the higher side of 24 in certain occasions. On our website from November School Committee, you can get a full presentation of our class size for the 21-22 school year if you would like to compare the class sizes from this year to the year before.
Thank you, John. Mary Lewis.
Hello, this is Mary Lewis from Precinct 1. I want to thank Chairman, Chairwoman Moriarty for a detailed presentation. I also appreciate that she anticipated the future needs and noted that we will not have budgeted for them if we are relying on single-use funds. My question, though, is about current needs, and maybe this relates to Ms. Zidel's question. What's remarkable about this budget is how much it seems that there is an undercompensated work by nurses, by social workers. And I wondered what items you would have liked to have included in this budget, but were unable to given current budget constraints.
Mr. Moriarty?
Sure, I'll begin, and then Superintendent Phelan can add his thoughts. So thank you.
Identify yourself, Meg.
Meg Moriarty, Chairperson of the School Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. And Mary, I will say that there were some additional FTEs that had been brought to us by our district leaders that they felt they needed, including some other academic support specialists. We needed to prioritize based on the data that was brought to the School Committee about students' needs, and that was how we came to the 5.2 that we were able to include in this budget after some appropriation of some other grants. There are always additional positions, I'm sure, that we wish we could fill, but those were the ones that we were working with for this particular budget. Superintendent Phelan?
Sure. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. Mary, thank you for the question. If there were additional dollars in the budget for this next school year, we would want to continue to hire more special education team chairs. We currently have two in the entire district that support only the four elementary schools. We would like to have one special education team chair in every building and possibly two at the Channery due to how large the school is. We would continue to want to reduce class size at the high school of core subjects. Fractional positions in each department would lower class size in our science, math, social studies, English, et cetera, where we have many levels of classes and the challenge of scheduling and supporting the student's choice of class at the high school would be well-served by more educators. We would also be served well with more staff for the specialists at the middle school level, especially in the areas of physical education, music, art. Those class sizes tend to be high. So just off the top of my head, supporting special education, supporting class size at the levels where they need it. Into an earlier question, we are budgeting and staffing to the enrollment that we have in each grade level right now, not to any anticipated number. But as Meg pointed out, class size at the high school, we never had to reduce any staff there, but the larger cohorts are beginning to fill the high school, and we haven't lost students at the high school since the pandemic.
Thank you, John. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the Town Clerk. At this time, 10 people are in line. Sue Bass, Paul Looney, PJ Looney, and Amy Kirsch are the first three.
Thank you. Sue Bass, you're next.
Thank you, Sue Bass, Precinct 3. This is a question that I've asked before, and Superintendent Phelan's predecessor told me they were studying it. Where are we on changing the school start times so that the high school students start later and the elementary students start earlier? Little kids can get up early and, and just physically, older students cannot. This has been shown by study after study. Superintendent Phelan's predecessor, as I said, said, oh, yes, we've got studies going. Where's that?
Thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you, Sue. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. We changed the start time for our high school students three school years ago from 7:35 a.m. to 8 a.m. And we will be discussing a shift for our 7th and 8th graders when they move up to the new high school, and that becomes our Belmont Middle High School, where the 7th through 12th will be together. So all of our older adolescents will have a start time of 8 p.m., excuse me, 8 a.m. at this point in time. So the shift did happen. It was piloted and supported and has been implemented.
If I can just say, 8 a.m. is still pretty early. When I was in high school, I started classes at 9:00. And.
I think we're moving beyond scope here a little bit, so if we could wind up, Sue.
Okay, there it is.
Thank you. PJ Looney?
PJ Looney, Precinct 7, Town Meeting. Meg, I guess Superintendent Phelan as well. You know, I, I guess I have nothing better to do outside. I look at population trends. And one of the things that's pretty obvious when you look at it in the United States and Massachusetts is back around the year 2K, we saw a population boom. And that was our last population boom. And sure enough, around 2018, 2019, that's when we seem to have maxed out in our population, student growth, average growth. So we were looking at projected student enrollment of 5,000. And I understand Superintendent Phelan said that we are currently staffing classrooms based on current enrollment. Two questions. One, are we also staffing administration based on current enrollment? And two, does this mean, based on if you follow the population trends, that we might be looking at a 6, 7, 8 high school combination? Have you explored that? Thank you.
Meg Moriarty, Chair of the School Committee, Precinct Member, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. PJ, thank you again for the question. The School Committee and the Superintendent have been having many discussions around enrollment. Like I said earlier, we have asked that the School Department be taking a constant look at that, and it will be something that throughout the next year, we are very aware that we need to keep an eye on, especially in the lower grades, like were said. We, at this point, are not considering changing the plans for the grades of reconfigurations in our schools. That was the way that it was meant to be done. And when it comes to administration, that is really a building, building-based needs. And I, you know, I wouldn't say that it's necessarily based on the number of students that are in the school, but sometimes the operations that have to go on in the school. But I think in general, all of your questions are really great questions for us to be having these discussions as we begin planning this year for the next steps toward reconfiguration, and we will certainly take them into consideration. Superintendent?
Well, we can go on. Amy Kirsch?
Hi, Amy Kirsch, Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member. I just want to say, I moved to Belmont because of the reputation of the schools originally, and I think that trend will be here to stay. As a local Realtor, I could reiterate that those are the people that are moving here, the ones very interested in the schools. I really appreciate this thoughtful package by the School Committee, and I do think we all should vote for it.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. Nine people are in line, and Matt Taylor, Caitlin Medevu, Matson, and Laura Burns are the first three.
Thank you. Matt Taylor, you're up.
Hi, this is Matt Taylor, Town Meeting, Precinct 1. Thank you, Meg, for the presentation. I really appreciate the gratitude you showed, especially for all the uncompensated labor and discretionary work that kind of closes the budget gaps we have. We have to pass this budget. I grew up in a town that voted down the school budget, and it taught me several things. The first teachers to leave are the experienced ones who are putting in discretionary effort toward every child every day. The next teachers to leave were cuts, the newest, lowest-paid teachers. So you saved fewer dollars while making your class sizes much larger. It taught me that there's a fee for everything, like the excellent sports that Meg highlighted. It taught me a hollowed-out, track-every-dollar school budget leaves just a building, and the cost is 95% of what a vibrant, ambitious school community filled with experience and growth. And a cost is 95% of what a vibrant, ambitious school community filled with experience and growth and discretionary work and individual uncompensated, individualized attention. I wish our budgeting process would track and present this kind of service level data to the community. I struggled as I poured through thousands of pages of documents from from Belmont, from surrounding towns, from the state, from the Federal Reserve economic data, and even best practice documents from as far away as the United Kingdom. You know, in many towns, you see numbers in the context of the prior two years and the coming year and the next two years after that. And that I found added a lot of valuable context. Is this budget sustainable? Is this, are these services sustainable? In Lexington, they have a great slide that shows what will get cut during lean years. And this really jumped out at me. Because of COVID, these have been flush years with federal and state dollars. And we've used those one-time funds for recurring things. And when those one-time funds, as Jeff pointed out, and as Meg pointed out, go away, we have a catastrophic cliff. Desperate needs, services will be cut. And the cuts are way more painful than the dollars that we save. We've been cutting and altering services, but I found it difficult to see the history of those cuts in services. For example, we used to have a fifth grade language sampler program that was amazing, and it was cut. And we have a tough time talking about bringing those things back. It's still on the website, which is confusing to parents about what level of service to expect. So we have to pass this budget. But I really want to see a lot of the data that drives this discretionary work and services that helps us maintain the Belmont standard for education that we all work so hard. There's a lot of volunteer work that goes in thousands of hours that isn't showing up in the budget. And I was so glad that it showed up in Meg's presentation. We have to pass this and we have to start presenting to our community the services that we provide in a Belmont Public Education next to the costs so that when we have those needs, we can actually demonstrate that we're falling short of our expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Mary Lewis, did I cut you off when you had a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. Mary Lewis, Precinct One. My question had to do with, it's a little bit delayed now, but my speaks somewhat to what Matt Taylor just said. My question had to do with the long-term costs of hiring people only one year at a time. So for instance, those social workers that we're only hiring one year at a time don't get to know the students or they do, but then they leave. So I wondered if there had been social workers specifically and counselors specifically beyond the ARPA funds in your desired budget for this year.
Meg or the superintendent, John?
Meg Moriarty, School Committee Member, Precinct Two Town Meeting Member. Mary, yes, I think that those are definitely positions that every single School Committee Member would like to be able to see in our operating, in our general fund budget. However, I think that every School Committee Member is also very aware of the burden on taxpayers and our town's fiscal future. And I think that we were trying to really weigh that along with what we were able to provide for our students' needs. And this year, we were still able to take advantage of the one-time funds. And so that was, that was the direction that we tried to go in and balance it with. Ms. Superintendent?
Thank you, Meg. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. Quickly, Mary, we have had the request for social workers on our budget for the last six years. Prior to COVID, it was part of our alignment to move into the configuration and provide mental health services in a structure in our schools along with the other positions that we had been advocating for. And as Meg pointed out earlier, we only had one social worker prior to COVID in grades five through 12 before hiring the federal one. So yes, we would like to have more and we would like to have continuity. But as Meg pointed out, there's there's a fiscal challenge to that work.
Thank you. Caitlin, Madavu Matson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Caitlin Medevu Matson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I am a proud graduate of Belmont Public Schools and now a proud BPS parent. I really appreciate all the careful prep that went into this budget presentation and and all the amazing work going into educating our kids and helping them thrive. My question is also about enrollment. With the reduced enrollment these past few years in the elementary ages, I imagine higher enrollment likely benefits the town and the schools in building efficiencies and in having more stable numbers from one grade to the next. So my my question is asking if this budget includes any marketing to increase enrollment or research to understand families' reasons for enrolling elsewhere these past few years and informing ways we can address this gap going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg, John?
Meg Moriarty, School Committee Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Thank you for the question. No, I can't say that we had any of those direct conversations to marketing or studying why students are leaving. There was a survey that was sent out a little over a year ago, I believe, to try to gather some of that information from families that the district then did use for the previous year. But it was not part of our conversation this current year.
Thank you. Laura Burns?
Hello, Laura Burns, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. And I want to just thank the School Committee for your thoughtfulness and thinking about a multi-year budget. And apropos of that, I was wondering how we will fund these positions that we're speaking about for mental health and support for the kids once this one-time funding goes away.
Meg Moriarty, School Committee Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. And Laura, I think that that is the challenge ahead in the School Committee. With a sense of urgency, looks forward to working with the the warrant committee and thinking about how we're going to approach the next couple of years of budgeting starting this summer.
Ellen, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. At this time, 14 people have their hands in in the air. It's Michael McNamara, Dan Barry and Ada Baptista.
Michael McNamara, you're next.
Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to ask, I know the school budget is quite large, but I know that there is a real pressing need for mental health care services for our students. I know that the pandemic has hit us all very hard. You've lost a lot of Belmont residents to this pandemic. We're sort of getting with vaccines and with treatment, we've really improved. But we still have seen terrible losses in our community and our whole lives have been disrupted. Students are have been working or learning online, which has not always been ideal. Often, students with disabilities can feel left behind. I know that there's a real crisis with losing friends, losing connections, maybe losing a parent. So I'm wondering if you could speak a bit more, Mrs. Mrs. Moriarty, to the need for mental health care for our students and want to sort of place that in the also in the framework of our minority students who often also can face other additional challenges and working to make sure that we have enough services, psychologists, social workers wherever we can for these students. And and just reminding my fellow town meeting members that if we're talking about mental health care and really we say we need to have mental health care for our students, that we need to make sure to fund this. Thank you.
Meg Moriarty, School Committee Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. One thing that I would also like to just remind people of, if from the beginning of my presentation, is that the Belmont Public School system is also very lucky to have some wonderful partnerships, one of them being the Belmont Wellness Coalition. We also have partnerships and do have work done through McLean Hospital. And so I think that 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 is another thing that we are very lucky to have. And the School Department has been very proactive in trying to maintain those partnerships and bring in services for our students and as well as, you know, recommend that students take advantage of those services. So in addition to what we are trying to do within our budget, we are also trying as much as possible to take advantage of these partnerships that are being offered to us. And I think, you know, also you spoke to a population where we are, we now have a DEI director who has been extremely proactive as well as Belmont Against Racism, Belmont Human Rights Coalition. And Becca have been proactive in reaching out to our DEI director and working together to help support students. So there are, like I said, there are the numbers that you see in the budget, but there are also a lot of other stories behind the scenes going on. And I would just like to call upon the support that we that we receive from partners like that to help support our students' mental health.
Thank you. Dan Barry.
Hi, this is Dan Barry from Precinct Six. I'm going to enthusiastically support this motion. However, I'm very concerned, as many other folks have been, that we have a $9.6 million structural deficit and we're only able to balance our budget by using one-time funds. If we don't want to have to ask Belmont citizens to pass operating overrides every few years, we're going to have to get very aggressive about increasing our revenues. And I think commercial development could save us. Belmont generates only 5% of its property tax revenue from commercial activity. Our comparable communities average 15%. That's.
Dan, we're moving beyond schools here.
Well, we can't fund them, certainly not one or two years from now if we don't have revenue. We're looking.
I understand.
For now. And I just urge town leaders, I'll make this short, to consider all the possibilities we have for expanding our commercial tax base to secure a more stable financial future for the schools and all of our other town services. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure. Thank you, Dan. Ada Baptista.
Well, Mr. Moderator, Ada Baptista, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I ask to move the question, please.
Mr. Baptista is moving the question. Ellen, how many in line?
Mr. Moderator, there are 13 people, 12 people with their hands in the air.
Mike, keep your hands in in case this is defeated. Keep them raised. But in the meantime, is there a second to the motion? Yes. And so we will move to the motion to terminate debate on item 22E. So the polls are open. All those in favor, please vote aye. Oppose, nay. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls and see the vote, please. Seventy, yeah, that is more than two-thirds. Vote is 177 in favor, 68 opposed. So debate is terminated. Scroll through the vote. All right, I don't hear any supplemental votes. So the vote on termination is 177 in favor, 68 opposed. So with that, two-thirds, more than two-thirds majority, we will go to the vote under Belmont Public Schools. Immediately following this vote, we'll take a five-minute recess. And then we will resume with five more motions, five more categories under the operating budget and then to Article 80, rank. So polls are open and go ahead and vote if you approve the budget for the schools. Yes, opposed, no. Still waiting for Belmont media here. This came on a few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. Show the tally, please. So the tally is 238 in favor, seven opposed to abstention. Scroll that. As I say, we'll take a brief recess and we'll begin with motion 22F vocational education, followed by public services and human services. All right. Thank you very much. To final vote, 238 in favor, seven opposed to abstention under 22E. Thank you, Meg Moriarty and John Phelan. We'll have a brief five-minute break. Thank you, Meg Moriarty and John Phelan. We'll have a brief five-minute break. So we're back to resume our debate on the operating budget. We're now at Article 22F vocational education. Mr. Luvian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. Move F vocational education, $1,137,269.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion on vocational education? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote on 22F. We can open the polls, so the polls are open. Vote yes if you support the motion under revoke Ed. No if you oppose. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. Show the tally. So vote, the vote is 216 in favor, none opposed, and three abstentions. So let's scroll the result. And then we'll go to motion G. Public services. All right. Final tally, 216, zero, three abstentions. Thank you. So Jeff, now to G.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. Move G, public services, $15,543,342.
Thank you. Discussion on 22G. Mr. Baptista?
Adi Baptista, town meeting member, precinct three. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask my question about inflation with regards to public services. To who can answer whether if we spend down, if inflation normally is 2% or 3%, and now it's around 8% analyzed. You know, what does that mean to public services in the town? What does that mean to if inflation either stays at that level or increases? And then if first free cash spends down, you know, what does that mean? What are the contingencies around that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luvian. That's a broad question, but do you want to take a crack at it?
I can comment and then I'll see if the town administrator would like to chime in as well. Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. I know in these budget assumptions, inflation was taken into consideration where appropriate. I mentioned earlier that there's some escalation in the facilities cost. That's why we saw town operating budget increase over 5%, which is including the cost of electricity, not only because of inflation, but because of a new service to the high school. I will say there's contingencies in the budget. There's a warrant committee reserve transfer of $400,000 that's allocated for the warrant committee to be able to appropriate if there's overruns, usually it's snow and ice. But there has been times when contract costs have escalated. I know we do contract with consortiums, multiple towns, to get the best price for a lot of our energy and our fuel. But some of that's been taken into consideration, but there definitely could be needs to address with reserve funds for any escalations. But I would defer to Jay Markot, Director DPW, or Patrice.
Patrice, did you have any supplemental comments?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I will tell you, when we were building the budget, we were taking into consideration the fluctuations within the market. In the facilities department, we have contract lines. They're fixed contracts that we have to go out to bid every three to five years. We are carrying a 3% to 5% increase in those contract lines, not knowing what we will get back once we go out and receive an open bids. So we are taking some of that into consideration. And then I will let Jay Mark out, the DPW Director, speak to DPW.
Mr. Mark.
Jay Mark, DPW Director. As Jeff Luvian alluded to earlier about the consortiums that we try to take advantage of, we do know what our fuel cost will be for both gas and diesel per gallon for FY '23. But yeah, we do try to have some sort of contingency in most of our contracted services. Tree services, we ask for more money than what was contracted for, just knowing with the amount of work that is out there and the added costs that we're seeing even in the beginning of the like calendar year. So yes, we do have some contingencies, but we'll see. It is definitely a wait-and-see game as to, you know, FY '23's budget and how we forecasted accordingly.
Thank you. Any further discussion on motion 22G? Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, looks as though we have one person, Roy Epstein, Select Board Member.
Roy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roy Epstein, a member of the Select Board and town meeting member from Precinct Six. So this question of inflation has come up several times this evening. I think people should just bear in mind when you look at any category of the budget, if inflation is 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%, that does not affect the town's budgeting fundamentally, because the town can only spend what our revenues are. And our revenues are fixed by Prop 2.5 plus new growth. So in any scenario, regardless of what inflation is, our revenues are unlikely to increase more than 3% or 3.5% without an override. And if inflation is vastly higher than that, then things simply have to be cut. And there may be a reallocation internally from one area, like public services to public safety or vice versa. But overall, the town by Prop 2.5 is locked into spending that is unlikely to increase by more than 3% or 3.5% regardless of the inflation rate.
Thank you. There's one hand here. Shi Yun Huang?
Jiun Huang, Precinct Eight. I have a question in regards to the Recreation Department and the pool. I'm looking at your numbers. I'm trying to figure out, is it self-sustaining at this point?
Question of self-sustaining of the Rec Department, Patrice, or?
Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I would say no, that the Recreation Department is not self-sustaining at this moment. We do hope to bring a proposal to this body at some point to make the Recreation Department a self-sustaining enterprise fund, but that is in the future.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll go to a vote on the motion, Article 22G on public services. Let's open the polls. Vote yes if you favor that. No if you don't, of course. Our next item is human services. All right, Belmont media is now with us. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. So the final vote for public service, 244 in favor. No opposed, no abstain? So we don't need to scroll that. Let's go to 22H.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. Move H, Human Services, $3,493,791.
Any discussion of human services? Seeing none. Now, we'll go to a motion, I mean a vote on the motion. So the polls are open on Article 22H, Human Services. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the voting. Show the tally. Final vote is 237 in favor. No opposed, one abstention. Go ahead and scroll, and we'll get ready for 22I. After 22I, great, thank you. The final vote, 237 in favor, no opposed, one abstention. After 22I, we go to the summation of it all, simply the transfer of all funds, of all the decisions that we've already made. So this is the last expenditure per se. With that, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. Moved I, Principal Debt and Interest, $15,778,851.
Any discussion of principal debt and interest? Yolanda Eckert?
Yolanda Eckert, Precinct Three. Jeff, just a quick question on the amount. When I look at the Warren Report, it's about $900,000 less, and I'm just, what else is included in this number?
Thank you, Jeff Luvian, Chair of the Warren Committee. There was a revision to this number after the Warren Committee report was published and sent to town meeting. I believe the majority of it was from the issuance of the second, the last borrowing of a high school debt of about 12 million. And that's why that number is different. We usually have a few numbers changed by the time we get to this article in town meeting and when the report is published.
Thank you.
Any other hands? I see none. See none, so let's go to a vote on 22I. We can open the polls. See none. So let's go to a vote on twenty two I. We can open the polls. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls, please. So the vote is two hundred and forty six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. If you just scroll through that. Then we'll go to the final motion under Article twenty two, which is basically the summation of everything that town meeting has already done. All right, a final vote, two hundred and forty six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Jeff, do you want to go to the final motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As this is the last motion of Article twenty two, I would just like to make a brief comment and publicly thank the the town administrative staff of Matt Haskell and Glenn Castro for tremendous help with the Warrant Committee and great collaboration, as well as the department heads. And on the School Department, Tony De Coligero in providing data and back and forth. I appreciate all their efforts and it really shows when we're able to move through this and get the budget passed. Thank you. With that, moved that the town transfer the following sums to meet in part, in part appropriations for capital expenditures and for fiscal year twenty twenty three operating budget made at this town meeting. From Fund Balance and Abatement and Exemption Surplus Account, three hundred thousand. From Belmont Light Department Pilot Payment, three hundred and fifty thousand. From Unreserved Free Balance, Unreserved Fund Balance, Free Cash, six million, six hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty two. From Parking Meter Receipts, thirty thousand. From Water Revenue for Indirect Costs, five hundred and nineteen thousand. For Sewer Revenue for Indirect Costs, five hundred and nineteen thousand. From Capital Endowment Fund for Various Capital Expenditures, one hundred and fifty thousand. From Capital Projects Fund for Very Capital Expenditures, seven hundred and twenty two thousand, eight sixty three. From Perpetual Care Fund Interest Transfer Out Account, twenty five thousand. For the Sale of Town-Owned Property, one million, forty two thousand, seven hundred and twenty two dollars. From American Rescue Plan Act, one hundred and sixty three thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
Thank you, Jeff. So these are the transfers throughout the budget in order to balance it and complete action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Julie Crockett?
Hi, Julie Crockett, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I have two quick questions. One is, how much money is in parking meter receipts after we transfer out this thirty thousand dollars?
And do you want to ask the second question now, Julie?
And the second question is, is the sale of town owned property from the the street that we talked about earlier today or earlier in town meeting? And is there any other town property available that the town foresees selling?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Anne Marie Mahoney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, and Chair of the Capital Budget Committee. The sale of the town owned property is the sale of the Cushing Square Parking Lot. Those proceeds can only be used for capital, and so they became some of our one time funds, as I described on June first. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. On the parking meters?
Tree Scarving, Town Administrator. I don't have an exact balance, but the last time I did look at this account, we had about thirty seven thousand dollars in the parking meter receipts account.
Thank you, Patrice. Any further hands on this motion? No, so we'll go to a vote to complete action on the budget on twenty two and the transfers. All those in favor, please say I vote I. I hope someday we'll be saying I again. Vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Let's close the vote on Article twenty two transfers. Final vote is two hundred and forty seven in favor, none opposed, none abstained. We don't need to scroll that. Thank you again, Jeff, and the Warrant Committee for a terrific job, as well as Patrice, the School Committee and Department Heads. I'm a former member of the Warrant Committee, and I know how much work goes into all of this. So thank you all. We now turn to our final article, Article eight. Let me take a little bit of time here to explain what was going to happen here. First, the process is as follows. Mark Palillo will read the motion. I'll then take votes of the various committees. Mark will speak briefly to the history and sort of how we got here. Then Pat Bruce, who is Chair of the Permanent Building Committee, will give a history and context of the Building Committee. I'll talk a little bit more about that when I introduce her. But this is very important context. And then Mark Haley, who has been Chair of the Preliminary Rink Design Committee, will make a few comments, followed by Ted Galanti, who has worked with Mark Haley and the committee, the Preliminary Committee, on some preliminary designs for the rink. We have an amendment under Article eight. So after the various presentations, and the presentations will probably take about half an hour in total, we then will have Roger Ruble read his amendment and then talk to that briefly. And then we will, as we do with all amendments, have a discussion of the amendment. Once that's completed, we then go back to the discussion of the main motion, as amended or not amended. So that's the process tonight. We'll begin with Mark Palillo reading the motion, and then I'll get the votes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Moved that the town establish a new municipal skating rink building committee to be approved by the town moderator to oversee the design and construction of a new public skating rink to be located west of Harris Field in a location approved by the School Committee and the Select Board, and to authorize said committee to enter into contract and take all actions necessary to carry out said project subject to funding. Further, that said committee be directed to develop and recommend a design to the School Committee and Select Board for the publicly adjoining the west border of Harris Field, including all costs associated with the design and construction of playing fields and the evaluation and possible demolition of the White Field House that take into account the needs of the School Department.
So the vote of the Select Board, Mr. Palillo?
Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large, the Select Board unanimously recommends favorable action.
And Mr. Lubian, the Warrant Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jeff Lubin, Chair of the Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee recommends favorable action as a vote of twelve and one abstention.
Twelve in favor and one abstention?
Correct.
Thank you. Capital Budget Committee?
Anne Marie Mahoney, Chair of the Capital Budget Committee and Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the School Committee?
Anne Moriarty, Chair of the School Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Mr. Moderator, we had five members present when we took our vote. We had four members recommend favorable action and one against.
Great. Thank you very much. So with that, Mr. Palillo?
Moderator, Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. If you would just bear with me for just one second, if you go back to the motion, I've heard that there may be some confusion. I just want to point out what happened here just briefly, Mr. Moderator, if you, if I can.
Sure.
The and some of you that have followed the Select Board meetings understood that it took us two or three meetings to to be aligned completely and to vote on this motion, which we all stand behind favorably. So the motion is broken down. You need to look at it in two ways. First and foremost is to establish a building committee to design and construct the new public skating rink. That said skating rink will need to, the location of it and citing will need approval by the School Committee and the Select Board. So that's that's the first point to understand and to enter into contract, so on and so forth. And then further, as we debated at the Select Board level, we ultimately felt that it was important to understand the impact of that sighting of the rink to the to the fields west of Harris Field. And so further, this committee will be directed and develop a recommendation, not not to construct it, but a recommendation on the design of those fields to the School Committee and Select Board, which include, of course, not only the fields and understanding the cost, not to construct them, of course. That's not what the building committee's charge would be, but to recommend a design and evaluate the demolition of the White Field House. We felt strongly that in order to establish, determine a permanent building, building committee, we need to understand the rink building, that it does impact the field design based on citing and also what happens to the White Field House. So that this building committee will also assume responsibility for those items as well. Not to construct the field, perhaps deconstruct the White Field House, but to recommend those things to the School Committee and the Select Board. So with that, Mr. Moderator, I have a very brief presentation.
Yes, before you do that, let me, I think this is a good moment to clarify scope of the discussion. And that is, tonight, we are the focus, the scope is whether we agree to appoint a building committee to continue the work of the Preliminary Committee or not. So that's the focus. It's beyond the scope to design the rink or to throw out ideas about designing the rink. It's beyond the scope to design the fields or throw out ideas about the fields. And it's beyond, and it's beyond the scope to talk about debt exclusions and when they might occur. What we're focusing on, pure and simple, is the Building Committee. And as I say, you will hear some context about that that better understand the history of this kind of thing and what we're asking of town meeting. So with that, Mr. Palillo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. I have a handful of slides just to go through the evolution here. And the Select Board feels strongly as that's the School Committee, that this rink has reached its useful life, not beyond it, no different than we feel strongly about the library as well has reached its useful life. So with that, so just to tell you, in terms of what the evolution here was, when the Select Board and School Committee voted to cite the rink, and I think it's called Option Two, I was not a member of the the Select Board at that time. That's that was a good vote to take perhaps at the time, but there was no funding mechanism in place. So the Select Board debated and discussed that perhaps we need to try to understand, can we find funding, both privately, perhaps through CPA, and so other means to to construct this rink that clearly is very old. And so the Select Board formed the Vigorola Ice Skate Rink Financing Committee July of last year, and these are its members. Members, Mark, myself, Tom DiPietro, Frank French Junior, Karen Malkaroy, Megan Moriarty, for representative School Committee, Dante Mazzoli, Ellen Schreiber, Kayla Wiggins, and Patrice Garvin. We met several times after that formation in July of twenty one to start the process and understand exactly funding mechanisms. We quickly concluded that we could not use CPA funds, that the whole idea about a public private partnership, even though that was entertained and explored by the prior Select Board before I joined it, was not something that likely could work, simply because the public private partnership proposal that was presented was a rink, a sheet and a half of ice, and clearly there's no room for more than just one sheet. And so at that point in time, you know, we felt that the only way towards funding this rink is through fundraising. And we've had success there, and I'll briefly mention that in a moment. And also through a perhaps a debt exclusion. But we didn't understood as well that there was no, there was no town meeting scheduled for the fall of last year. And by the time, you know, we've reached town meeting today to form a building committee, we would not be in any position, in fact, to realize any type of schematic design or design of a rink to cost it out effectively for the Select Board to put a debt exclusion on the ballot August of this year, and I'll talk briefly about that in a moment. As we were discussing that, we were fortunate to receive a direct earmark allocation from our state legislators, both Senator Bronsberger and Representative Rogers of a quarter million dollars to for rink design. They also provided money for the library and for EDAC and other, you know, housing needs in town. And so through your assistance, Mr. Moderator, and with the help of Pat Bruce, they'll talk further about it. We decided that we wanted to form a primary rink design committee that could begin to work at least under the purview of the Select Board with representation of both the build, permanent building committee and the Vigorola Ice Skate Rink Financing Committee to hire an architect, to hire an OPM, Loanist Project Manager, and to execute on the quarter million dollars that we were so fortunate to get to perform a feasibility study with the intent that, once that was completed, and it has been completed, to hand those results and analysis over to a permanent building committee that I hope will be formed, a building committee that I hope will be formed tonight under Article eight, so that we would have some time, in fact, to fully cost this out and perhaps consider a debt exclusion by August of this year. August first is the deadline for the Select Board to put a debt exclusion on the ballot. Next slide, please. And so this outlines exactly what that's about. Now, I will say, Mr. Moderator, and I'll say this to town meeting members, that that is, it was an enthusiastic sort of point of view and optimistic. And based on the current motion, and clearly we need to form the Building Committee, but based on that motion that I just read, it may be very difficult to meet that next timeline. If you go to the next slide, I'll talk briefly about that. Because there's a lot that needs to happen between now and August first. The Building Committee, once formed, has to be appointed, but then needs to consider the work that's already been done on the feasibility study, begin schematic design, cost that out, get approval on citing a recommendation to the School Committee and the Select Board. It also needs to have a public forum to get input, look at all the programmatic issues. Not saying that we can't meet the deadline, I'm just suggesting that perhaps that that could be challenging by August first. And I will commit to the town meeting members, and I know my colleagues in the board commit as well, that we would never put a debt exclusion on the ballot unless we believe it was ready to be put on the ballot, that everything had been accomplished under that motion, and that we were confident in the costing of the rink, the sighting has been approved, and the design of the fields was ongoing. But we do need to form the Building Committee, because if we can't meet this August first deadline, at least we can continue the work of this Building Committee throughout the balance of this year, continuing our fundraising. throughout the balance of this year, continuing our fundraising efforts through the balance of this year, and consider putting a debt exclusion on the ballot in the spring of '23. If we wait till the fall to form a building committee, if in fact we even have a fall town meeting, I believe that, that would not give us enough time at that point. We would have lost momentum that we've gained, would not give us enough time to put it, to consider debt exclusion for the spring of next year. And just briefly, Mr. Moderator, I will say that there has been active and ongoing fundraising, primarily done by Belmont Youth Hockey Association. I want to congratulate them. They've raised close to 600,000, gotten commitments on $600,000 of funds. We already have the quarter million dollars, and, and some of you may know that Representative Rogers was able to earmark a half a million dollars under the bond bill for perhaps a direct sort of, if the governor supports it, additional half a million dollars. So I believe that fundraising will continue. I think we need to form the building committee and continue the momentum that we've established. So I urge you to support our advocacy. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Palillo. We now turn to Pat Bruch, and let me, Chair of the Permanent Building Committee, let me set the stage here. There's been a lot of, to say the obvious, communication on social media about building committees and this building committee. And we have a history of, on building committees in this town. Nobody knows more about that than Pat Bruch, because she's been involved in virtually every building for the last 35 years in Belmont. And so she is the most knowledgeable person about all of this. And municipal buildings are very different from private buildings. In particular, the last building committee that we approved was in November of 2017 for the library. So that's four and a half years ago. And by my calculations, somewhere around half of town meeting are new members since then. So that means roughly half of you have never even voted for or against a building committee. So with that in mind, we've asked Pat to, and she's not, doesn't have any slides, but she will read her remarks, and I would ask you to listen closely, because it will answer a lot of questions that I'm sure you have in your mind about building committees and what their purpose is and when they're formed and so on and so forth. So with that in mind, I'd like to introduce Pat Bruch to read her history and context for our vote tonight, and thanks again, Pat.
Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, and Chair of the Permanent Building Advisory Committee. It's the job of the Permanent Building Advisory Committee to oversee all building projects in town. The members have experience in building projects, have served on previous building committees, and understand the process required for municipal building projects. They provide a level of expertise across projects, and they're aware of the lessons learned from the previous projects. Permanent Building Committee members are appointed to each separate building committee. I am here to clarify the role of the building committee in any building project and therefore shed light on the decision at hand. First, let me explain how a building committee interacts with the community and the town government. A building committee is responsible for the project from beginning to end.
Pat, excuse me, can you just speak up a little? Thank you.
Sure. Can you raise it there enough? I don't know how. A building committee is responsible for a building project from beginning to end. Town meeting approves the formation of a building committee to renovate or replace a building. The town moderator appoints members to the building committee, consulting with the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee and other key bodies. The building committee consults with other boards and committees as appropriate for the project, but the committee is independent and makes its own decisions. The committee seeks input from the community and is, and is guided by that input from the community. The committee requires approvals from the town's building inspectors, planning board, and conservation commission where applicable, just as any private building project would. At the end of this process, the building committee produces the design and a cost estimate. Finally, the decision is made whether to fund the project. There are several steps in a building committee process. First is the feasibility study. The goal of a feasibility study is to narrow down from the definition of a project and eliminate options. It can be performed by a study committee or a building committee. During feasibility, the committee evaluates the state of the current facility to determine whether the project is a renovation or a new building. The committee works with the appropriate governing body to define the program. That is, what is the function of the building? And what does the building need in order to perform that function? The feasibility study is high level. It outlines a set of options that lay out the facility as a set of building blocks. These options allow a comparison of site, function, and rough cost. The result is a choice of an option to move forward with, and a conceptual design is often the final product. In Belmont, building projects have had a wide range of feasibility studies. Some have taken only a few months, some several years. Some are done by the study committee, some by the building committee. Some have significant complexities of site or program, others are very simple. My point is that there is no set rule for what a feasibility study is or must entail. It will be different for different projects. After choosing an option, the project needs a schematic design. What's the difference between a conceptual design and a schematic design? A conceptual design is very high level and provides a roadmap for how to perform the needed functions of the building, but it ends with many unknowns. A schematic design, on the other hand, is detailed. It requires a registered architect to design a building to scale and includes enough detail to produce a fair exploration of cost. For example, will the building use brick or wood or concrete? What type of roof and windows? What are the number and locations of rooms? What is the site work and parking looking like? A cost estimator takes this design and prepares a detailed cost estimate. However, this design is not sufficient to go to bid. That comes later. Once funding is approved, the architect completes design development, produces detailed construction documents, the project goes to bid, and construction begins. How does this apply to our decision tonight? Up until now, the process for the rink has been, in early 2021, approximately a year and a half ago, the town hired an architect to do a high-level feasibility study that took the basic needs of the rink and developed several options for citing. One option was chosen by a vote of the school committee in the summer of 2021, and the decision was made to proceed. At that point, the project was ready for a building committee, and the plan was to create it at the anticipated fall 2021 special town meeting. However, we didn't need a special town meeting in the fall of 2021, so the building committee couldn't be created then. Instead, in late fall '21, the Select Board created a temporary committee to take the conclusions of the feasibility study, choose an owner's project manager and architect, begin schematic design, and hand it off to a building committee following this annual town meeting. In the past seven months, the temporary committee did just that. They chose an owner's project manager and architect, they explored the program, the citing and the design options, held a community input meeting, and are currently in the process of creating a schematic design with cost estimates. The temporary committee has done its job, and it's ready to hand over the work to a rink building committee as planned. The building committee will own the project and have the responsibility for meeting the needs of the community. How does this compare with other Belmont building projects? Let's look at a couple of different types of projects. The Underwood Pool is an example of a simple building project. We did a feasibility study for the site, an option was chosen, a building committee formed. The our project manager and architect were hired, the building committee did schematic design, funding was secured, and the construction proceeded. Similar to the rink, the pool was a small-scale project with a very simple mission and simple design requirements. The pool is a body of water with mechanicals and locker rooms. The rink is a sheet of ice with mechanicals and locker rooms. The pool timeline reflects the lack of complexity. Two months were spent hiring the OPM and architect, and three months doing schematic design before the project was presented for a funding decision. The high school, on the other hand, is a very large, complex project with a very complicated program. After 10 years of application to the MSBA, Belmont was finally chosen to be part of their funding program, and a building committee was created. The building committee conducted a feasibility study that analyzed program, which included grade configurations and multiple site options. The process took two and a half years that ended with a schematic design and cost estimate that was ready for a debt exclusion. These are the conclusions that we can draw from Belmont's past projects. One, each project is unique. Second, the configuration of feasibility study and schematic design is different for each project. Three, building committees own all decisions made for their projects. And four, town meeting has created a building committee to do schematic design for every building project in the last 30 years. It was important for us to review the role and boundaries of building committees in order to understand what we are voting on tonight and what we are not. We are voting whether to create a building committee. We are not voting on a design, we are not voting on funding, we are not voting on a debt exclusion, and we are not voting on a timeline. If we create a building committee, the committee will take over the work begun by the temporary rink study committee and complete the schematic phase of the project. If we do not create a building committee, the project will be stalled. The temporary committee, appointed by the Select Board, has served valuable role, but it is just that, temporary. It has been asked whether we need to answer all of the questions before we create a building committee. Quite to the contrary, the building committee is the committee that will explore and answer the outstanding questions. If we do not create a building committee, there is no committee to engage with the community and complete the analysis. As Chair of the Permanent Building Advisory Committee, I can tell you that the rink project is more than halfway through schematic design, and it is time to hand off this work to a building committee. The sooner we do this, the more successful the project will be. I hope that this has been a helpful clarification of the role of the building committee in the execution of a building project, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat, for that very clear and comprehensive overview. We now turn to Mark Haley and then Ted Galante to talk about the work of the Preliminary Rink Design Committee. Somebody has raised a question in the Q and A about of this preliminary committee, if we're not discussing the design on town meeting floor. Well, the answer is, is simple, straightforward. And that is, as you've heard, this committee was created to begin the process and is ready to hand it off to a permanent building committee. And it would obviously not be fair to town meeting if we simply did not allow the preliminary committee to tell town meeting members what they've done and what conclusions they've reached. So that's the purpose of the next two presentations. First from Mark Haley, the Chair, and then from Ted Galante. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for inviting us to present tonight and in the Select Board for appointing this committee to get this project underway. Yeah, I think this slide is pretty, we were appointed in 13 December of 2021. Our first order of business was to, I'll have the next slide, please. Our charge was to conduct a contract for a feasibility study to evaluate the potential locations and size for renovated or new skating facility. We took what Perkins and Will did, which was a previous study, which looked at three different options, three different locations. We expanded that to five. We looked very hard at whether or not we could renovate the existing rink. And what our charge also included was to engage an OPM and a designer or design services through an RFQ process, which is required by the state. We did that in the months of January and February, where we brought on and selected Galante Architectural Studio to be the architect for the rink and CHA to be the OPM. We then got underway and started doing these studies, which included a program that was provided by the school department and the athletic department of what they felt they needed as a stakeholder for the rink and expanded locker room facilities to operate the athletic facility or the athletic facility that's west of the high school, which includes the track, Harris Field, the rink, and the fields beyond the rink. With that, next slide. I think it was, is good to just step back for a second, and we all talk about this rink, and I think a lot of people in the town think of it as just a rink for the Belmont High School bossy girls and boys hockey teams, which are, consist of four teams, JV at both levels and at boys and girls. We also have figure skating clubs. Belmont Youth Hockey rents a significant amount of the ice time that currently serves over 400 to 500 young children in Belmont. The sport program is, is a great program that I used to, they'd come on on the ice after I would be there. It's a great program for children in need to learn how to skate. Learn to skate programs have always been, skating lessons have always been a part of this thing. A rink allows the town to host league games at their own rink. There's a men's and women's adult hockey program that is run out of the rink. Is rented for first responders. We can have community skating events. All the public schools come to this for skating parties and the like. Belmont Recreation uses it for numerous programming and the like, and then it has some rentals. The other piece that's coming into play that needs to be looked at in more detail than we have done in the feasibility study is housing of locker rooms. Once the White Field House goes, goes away, and what does this high school need to support football, baseball, softball, field hockey, and all their other sports programs that use both Harris Field and the rink? Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? As we talked and Pat Bruch talked about, an appointment of a rink building committee has to occur. They then would seek approval from the Select Board and the school committee regarding the location and finalizing the program for the rink. They would complete the concept schematic design for selected location and program and develop a total project cost, not just a construction cost, but the total project cost, which includes both construction and design for use by the Select Board in assessing what the need and the timing for debt exclusion. And then that committee would conduct public outreach regarding the location and program and cost. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Galante. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mark. We're having a problem because we don't see that Ted Galante is on. He was on, but he doesn't appear to be now.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is Nancy at the Belmont Town Clerk's Office. We have a point of order from Judy Feins.
Yes, Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Judy Feins, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. My point of order is that I appreciate what Mr. Haley has presented about the work has been done. That has been done, but I want to point out that the preliminary committee did not post any of its deliverables for public review, including town meeting member review. And I don't think it's appropriate for Mr. Galante to present about the design, which nobody's had a chance to look at, except in a very brief way. And it's in a public meeting in April. So I respectfully submit that maybe the presentations could end now, and we could begin to have public discussion. Thank you.
Sure. I don't think, as I said a moment or two ago, I don't think that would be fair to town meeting, because at this point, it's incomplete. I don't see how remaining in the dark helps town meeting in any way, shape, or form. So, but Mr. Galante, at this point, is not on. Mr. Haley?
He, he said he is on. He doesn't understand why they can't. Had someone brought him up to be a panelist?
We had.
We'll try it again.
Mr. Galante, this is Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. Could you tell us what name your-
Mr. Galante, this is Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. Could you tell us what name you're listed under, please? We are unable to find you under the name Ted Galante.
Would it be Design Studio?
Raise your hand.
Design Studio, Ellen.
Thank you very much.
Right. I think we are sat. Are you there, Ted? Thank you all for bearing with us here.
Good evening. Pardon my technical difficulties.
All right. And so now, Mr. Galante will give a brief presentation of completing the work of the Preliminary Committee. So if you'd introduce yourself, Ted, and proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. Ted Galante from the Galante Architecture Studio. We've been working with the building committee to develop a few conceptual ideas. And so I'm going to present a series of slides that that talk generally about the rink and the Whitefield House. Next slide, please. So the rink, as we know, is built in 1969, completed in 1971. As has been talked about, has hosted thousands of people participating in numerous programs. But was always, but it was constructed as a sheet of ice and then a chain link fence, and then eventually a building frame was put around it as sort of a, an overall warehouse building with a few tiny additions and alterations here and there. Next slide, please. The building has, saying that it's served its useful life as being generous, it is in a state of failure. It is, it is a very difficult building. There are structural questions. There are insulation questions. There are building envelope questions. Can we keep birds and such out? And we can't. The building leaks in a few different places, as one can see on the right-hand side. It has been studied a number of times, and it has always been stated that the building should be modified or replaced. Next slide, please. There are significant code violations in many places. The, in terms of accessibility, it is, I've seen many buildings in my 25 years of doing this, and this one is one of the more notable, I'll say, for its code violations. Next slide, please. Similarly, the Whitefield House was built in 1932 and houses a bit of program, but has also met its useful life. Next slide, please. The building is failing in a number of different places. It's cracking. It is not ADA compliant. There's failure in the roof area. You can see the broken windows and many different elements. Next slide, please. There is, again, a number of code violations in this building, some obsolete equipment that that needs to be relocated. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so the program, what what goes into, what is in these buildings? What is in the rink and what is in the field house are the two are two of the parts that we were talking about with the building committee. Next slide, please. So in the rink, there's obviously a sheet of ice, and there are some lockers, and there's a lobby and spectator seating and all the components that go with an ice rink as Zamboni. And in the Whitefield House, there are locker rooms for the high school and some mechanical equipment and storage. And then there's some optional programming that we've talking about, like a first aid area and maybe some parking and some other pieces that we, you know, community involvement. And so as we started to coalesce all of those items, determine what's in the buildings, the status of the buildings as part of the feasibility study, we started to coalesce all the program items and put them in sort of a diagram. Next slide, please. And so this becomes sort of an idea for how a building that houses the program that is currently housed in two separate and failing buildings can be housed in one overall building. And so obviously, the clearest part of this diagram is an ice rink in the center with some seating around it. And then on the left, some support with the Zamboni and shop and such. On the right, hockey locker rooms, et cetera. And then at the top of the plan, there's really pieces that are the entrance and some community space and some high school locker rooms, et cetera. And so, next slide, please. So we started to look at different field layout and site options. And as was stated earlier, instead of studying just three options, we studied five. And I'll go through them very quickly. Next slide, please. The first option was to consider a renovation and expansion of the existing building and see what the impact on the fields would be. Harris Field is on the far right of the slide. The rectangle just left of that is the expanded hockey rink. The rink is fundamentally in the same location, reusing the building and then expanding lockers around it as is needed. And then the fields are the diagrams to the left where they're overlapping upon one another. Concord Ave, just for reference, is the diagonal line through the center of the slide. Next slide, please. We studied putting the building parallel to Concord Ave and having the fields layout between that building and the tracks all the way in the back and sort of slightly more expansive version. So if the existing rink went away, what would happen with the fields and where would we put the rink? Next slide, please. We studied putting the rink back along the tracks just to the side of Harris Field and move the field sort of in this diagonal slightly Z-shaped remaining area that was there. And this is similar to what was voted on by the school committee at one point. Next slide, please. We studied putting the rink behind the mobile gas station that's often top left and sort of compressing all the fields closer to Harris and tried to understand some of that. The next slide, please. We studied, this was a community suggestion, in fact, from what the community meetings and some community feedback, putting some parking behind the mobile station and putting a, the hockey rink sort of across from right, right of the, obviously, how do I describe this? Parking behind mobile and then the rink and then compress the fields a little bit more between Harris Field and the new hockey rink building. Next slide, please. So those were five, asked five locations and five field configurations that we that we took a look at. We considered many other layers of information inside of that discussion. You saw parking in one, but there was some discussion about it in other places. But one of the key elements that we've been considering, that the town has talked to us about considering specifically, is the is the idea of a net zero energy goal and potential for a townwide net zero approach. Net zero energy is basically, there are many definitions of net zero, but the idea is to eliminate fossil fuels from the building if possible and make it as carbon neutral as possible. Next slide, please. One way of doing that is to recapture what's known as embodied energy, which is all of the materials that were used to make the Whitefield House and/or the rink capture some of the energy that was used to create them when they were harvested from the ground, turned into actual material, shipped to the site, constructed on site. And if there's a way of reusing them, that was something that we were talking about trying to do. So that helps get to the net zero place. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And so we started to look at the building and decide what is possible to reuse either in its current location or in another location within the building. And so that's, that was a consideration, and I'll just go through this quickly, but next slide, please. So the vents, I'll talk about the structure, that is the frame that holds up the roof of the rink are in relatively good shape, not fantastic shape. They likely need stiffening and such for a developed rink. But that is a part that may be salvageable in its location and strengthened for any development or repair of the building. Next slide, please. The pearlins are the linear pieces that hold up the roof. Those are highly unlikely to be able to be used in their current location. But one of the creative ideas is to harvest those, that material and use it somewhere else in the building, perhaps as siding, perhaps as something else so that that the energy is captured and kept on site. And there are ways of doing calculations about embodied energy and applying to agencies that give you credit to make this a net zero project within the town of Belmont. And that's something that would happen in the next phase of the project. Next slide, please. So we have the roof. Next slide. We have the building envelope that we were considering, that the perimeter, there's some masonry, and there's a possibility of not taking out individual bricks, but harvesting brick panels, maybe, and perhaps reusing them somewhere. Next slide, please. We have the pearlins, which I talked about, the horizontal linear pieces that can be used in another location. Next slide, please. We have the vents that we believe can be used in this location. Next slide. And so the idea became that there's some strength built behind the idea of renovating and expanding the existing building and trying to make it a net zero facility. The other component of this is to, well, let me continue on his way. So renovating, expand. So let's go through that really quick. Next slide, please. So this was a site plan, putting the, the renovating, expanding the white area of the diagram where the ice rink is shown is the existing building, and the colored area is all of the additional locker space and program area that would be required for this. Next slide, please. The existing floor plan, what is about this size, it's roughly 30,000 square feet. Next slide, please. And we were looking at a building that was closer to 48,000 square feet. Next slide, please. The building currently looks like this when we cut it in half. So where, so what you're looking at is a section through the building. You can see a tiny hockey player in the middle of the rink there with the vents around it. Next slide, please. And then this is the expanded rink. So we're renovating the existing building. Those vents are staying in place, and we're expanding the rink off to one side. Next slide, please. Another component of a net zero building is the possibility of making the building as carbon neutral as possible, meaning that the existing building has almost no insulation in it as it currently stands. It has some insulation to the roof, but none on the walls, and it leaks air in all kinds of ways. Any new building, any renovation of that building would would make the building extensively insulated to meet energy code and to and to make the building as energy efficient as possible. The possibility of eliminating fossil fuels is there. The possibility of putting photovoltaic panels on the building in a couple of different locations are there. The possibility of making it a carbon neutral, all electric building are there. And capturing some of the embodied energy is one of the pieces that we would also talk about. So that's really the extent of what I think I would present tonight. But what we've been through are five different site locations, some with community feedback, trying to develop a program that is the most refined and organized for the town of Belmont, for this location, preserve the building, I don't know, that's not the right word, reuse as much of the building as possible so that it is clearly a renovation and make it as energy efficient and potentially net zero where we can do that. Mr. Moderator, turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ted. To emphasize, this is a description of the work of the Preliminary Committee, and it would be handed off to a permanent building committee if Town Meeting so desires. So where we are is in this moment is we don't have a final design. We're not going to debate the design. But Ted, Mark and Ted have brought you up to date with the debate and discussions and conclusions of the Preliminary Committee. So they have completed with a little bit more, enough to week or two, but completed their responsibility. And now they're asking Town Meeting whether we want to, we, Town Meeting, want to take the next step to a building committee or not? And that's what the debate is about. But let me stop here and have just one correction. It's been brought to my attention that when we read the final motion on Article 22, that we had the number from Capital Projects Fund for various capital expenditures. In front of us, we had the number $545,121. The motion, the correct motion, which was sent to all Town Meeting members on June 7, had the correct amount of $722,863. Pardon me. I've just been told the opposite. It was read as by Mr. Lubian, 722,863. It was sent to Town Meeting members as 545,121. So I would simply like to correct the record that we consider the vote in support of that was as as distributed to Town Meeting members, the 545,121, and that that would go into the record. So I would ask for unanimous consent of this change. Not a change in the motion sent to you, but a change as read tonight. So is there unanimous consent? I don't see any objection. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your forbearance on that. So now we will go back to Article 8. And at this motion, we've heard the presentation as I described. And so at this motion, we, at this moment, we go to the amendment by Roger Rubel, and that will be read into the record by Mr. Rubel and make a brief presentation. And then we will discuss the amendment and vote it yes or no. And then we will come back to the discussion of the main motion. So, Mr. Rubel, would you present your motion? You there, Roger?
Yeah, I just unmuted myself. Sorry.
Great. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, move that the main motion to warrant Article 8 be amended to require the Municipal Skating Rink Building Committee to design and construct an all-electric, energy-efficient building by adding the following sentences. "The Municipal Skating Rink Building Committee is authorized and instructed to design and construct the Municipal Skating Rink Building," in parentheses, "the building, "so that the building, when completed, will be all-electric," in parentheses, "i.e., no fossil fuel combustion will be used to power the building or operate any building, devices, or services," in parentheses, "so that the building's shell and mechanical systems will be designed to reduce the electric load of the building as much as feasible, and so that the building includes as much solar generation of electricity as is feasible." "The committee will consider operating costs as a core financial factor in building design."
Pardon me, I was muted. Let me now take votes of any committees that may have voted on this amendment. First, the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Calocchio, the Select Board, coming in member at large. The Select Board unanimously recommends unfavorable action.
Thank you. And Jeff, did the Warrant Committee vote on this?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair.
And the vote?
Moderator. Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Select, the Warrant Committee. The vote was five unfavorable action, five favorable action, and three abstentions. So five were in favor, five were against, and there's three abstentions. I think, just to clarify, give some context around the vote, we took the vote this evening before Town Meeting. I think the majority of the Warrant Committee appreciates the nature and the, and the of the going to all-electric or no fossil fuels. But a group of us were concerned about the precedent this will set and not giving the flexibility to the building committee to try to implement this, but also managing the cost of the project. And therefore, that's why you had this mixed vote, where spirit of it was appreciated, but the actual language was a concern for some of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then let's go to the Capital Budget Committee. Did you vote on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Anne Marie Mahoney, Chair of the Capital Budget Committee and Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Similar to the Warrant Committee, while the Capital Budget Committee is supportive of efforts to incorporate green energy, we found this amendment much too restrictive. Therefore, with five members present this evening, we recommended unfavorable action by a vote of four to one, and it is our understanding that Members Dash and Fallon voted with their respective committees.
Great. Thank you. And then, Meg, did the School Committee consider this amendment?
The School Committee did not consider this amendment.
Great. Thank you. And so with that,
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The energy, I have one question for Mr. Palillo. Did the Select Board vote on the original?
Let's come, let's continue the presentation. We can come back to that. So
the Select Board members and each of us can clarify our position once Mr. Rubel makes his presentation.
Great. So, Mr. Rubel, you were starting to say the Energy Committee?
Yep. Well, the Energy Committee voted on the original motion, the the original amendment.
Okay. And so do you want to go ahead with your presentation? Or what was the vote of the Energy Committee when they took it?
It was unanimously in favor of the amendment.
Okay, fine. Now you have a presentation, a brief presentation.
Okay, by submitting this amendment, I raised two questions that I would like town meeting to consider. Does town meeting have a role in shaping the design of a proposed new public be building? If yes, does town meeting agree with the core design principles I have proposed and listed on this slide? Why do I think that town meeting has a role in the design? Last week, when we debated Article thirteen about solar on the new high school building, Town Council informed us, quote, "Once a building committee is formed and funded, town meeting can advise and urge, but cannot require how the funds are spent." Article eight gives the building committee a great deal of authority, quote, "to enter into contracts and take all actions necessary to carry out said project, subject to funding," end quote. Town meeting has two opportunities to influence a building project. When the building committee is formed, as is the case tonight, and at a future town meeting, when the building committee returns with their design finalized to fund construction. At that point, town meeting is left to approve or deny the request. Influencing the design at that point is not practical. If town meeting wants to have a role in shaping this project tonight is our one bite at the apple. One objection to this amendment is that town meeting should not be macro managing a building project. I totally agree. What I am proposing are core design principles that should be included in this building and likely any public building constructed in the town, at least in the next thirty years. So let's look at the core principles on this slide. First, my amendment requires an all electric building. Town meeting has already gone on record in support of all electric buildings. When we overwhelmingly passed Article eleven in two thousand and twenty one, directing our state senator and representative to push for a statewide ban on fossil fuels in new buildings. The second point, I think you will agree that cutting capital costs will not serve us well if buildings are overly expensive to operate. Therefore, operating costs should be analyzed along with capital costs. Third point, in New England, a well insulated building shell drives down operating costs and increases building comfort. Choosing energy efficient mechanical devices in any building, but especially in an ice rink, is essential to manage energy demand and reduce operating costs. My final point, I believe all new town buildings should have significant solar generation. However, this amendment would not require solar panels to be placed where they do not make economic sense. The benefits of solar include reduced operating costs, a hedge against energy rate increases, and providing more clean energy for Belmont. I thank you, and I look forward to a lively discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Mr. Palillo, did you have a comment or not at this point? On the Select Board vote?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, and I think my colleagues would like to comment as well. Mark Floccia, the Select Board, the meeting member at large. Look, we wholeheartedly support the intent of what Mr. Rubel is amendment accomplishments without question. And we believe that we will have an opportunity as Select Board members along with the school committee to influence the building committee in terms of how they present their design and costing to us, that we want to ensure that it is green. It's a green building. I don't know whether it can be all electric. I think Ted Galanti has said perhaps it can be. But I I think it's micromanaging what this building committee needs to accomplish. You already saw Ted Galanti present the fact about net zero energy. We have implements the preliminary ring design committee to consider it being a a a rink that in fact is is green, that is to some extent net zero. But we feel as though this amendment just reduces the flexibility around that matter. And I would ask my colleague Vice Chair Adam Dash or a member, Roy Epstein, to comment as well, because we did debate this at length, and we support green energy. We really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palillo. Do either Roy or Adam, do you want to comment at this point or not?
I can briefly, Mr. Moderator, if you like. Adam Dash, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member Large. I mean, clearly, I'm I'm in favor of green buildings and electrification. We could have a pretty strong record on that. The problem, of course, is it's a little too soon to know what electric, what an electric rink means as far as size, as far as infrastructure, as far as location. I don't even know if there is another electric rink anywhere. I mean, this is sort of something that hasn't been properly, I would think, vetted as a requirement. I don't, I certainly can say that the town committees, we do have a policy that the town committees do take energy efficiency and the green principles into consideration when designing a building, but one also has to take into effect the practicality and the cost, particularly for a very specific building that this is. It's not a typical, you know, office building. A skating rink is a very unique kind of thing. So with that, we didn't feel as though it was appropriate to bind the committee so forcefully as this is attempting to do. However, we do, as Mark said, do support the general principle and certainly hope the committee can find a way to make it work, but to require them in advance of even having, you know, final designs, I think it's putting the cart before the horse.
And, Mr. Epstein, did you want to add anything or wait?
Just very briefly, Mr. Moderator, Roy Epstein, member of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. As my colleagues have said, we we all support the spirit of a very green building, but I do agree that it's premature to put these requirements on the building committee. Some of the terms are not even defined, such as what does it mean as as much as feasible? Engineering feasible, economically feasible. I I think that the certain, the experience of the high school building committee has shown that the town has a very strong preference for a very modern, energy efficient building. And when the time comes to fund such a building, I I'm sure that the building committee will be well aware of that expectation in framing any design they put forward. So I do believe that there will be ample opportunity for the public to comment on these aspects of the design, and the building committee will certainly take them into account because they want to get this project approved at the proper time in the future when the time comes to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Now I'm reminding town meeting members who want to speak that we're only considering Mr. Rubel's amendment now, not the general motion. So Ellen, with that.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are eight people with their hands up. Ada Baptista, Bob McGaw, and Peg Callanan are the first three on the amendment by Mr. Rubel to Article eight.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Baptistas. Baptista, you're up.
I'm Ada Baptista, Town Meeting, Precinct Three. Again, I like to iterate whatever else is saying so far is that I I I agree with the spirit of of Mr. Rubel's amendment, but I I just don't think it's a good idea to to be so prescriptive. I I my my biggest concern is no fossil fuel combustion will be used to power the building. I mean, that means to me that this has to be powered by nuclear or completely by by alternative energy, which is, I don't think, I don't know if that's even a feasible thing to to say. So I I say like no to this, to this article, and understand the principle and hope that if the committee is formed, that the committee does take to heart trying to be green. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob McGaw?
Can you hear me?
I can, Bob.
Everything in this amendment.
Bob, Bob, introduce yourself.
Oh, Bob McGaw, Precinct One. Everything in this amendment are things we all agree to. None of this restricts the flexibility of the committee. I've talked to Mark Haley. It is very easy, and he intends that the rink be all electric. So all these comments about that point are bogus. Nobody wants a building that is not insulated. We all want it insulated. And we all want solar panels if you can put on it. We should all support this. It is painful to know that a building committee, once created, cannot be impacted by decisions of the Select Board or the town meeting. The building committee is only constrained by the charge that created the building committee. So if you want an energy efficient skating rink, you have to say so tonight. Otherwise, the building committee has a free hand to do whatever he wants. And even though Roy Epstein says that they're going to listen to you, believe me, I have spent way too much time trying to be a citizen, talking to building committees, frequently finding I'm ignored.
Mr. Mr. McGaw, you're 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 moving off scope here, and you're getting into territory that I can't accept to start blaming other committees. That's not part of this discussion.
It is true that the building committee is autonomous, though, correct?
Yes, that part. I didn't stop you with that. It's when you started talking about other committees.
Trying to prove the point that anybody who wants to say they're not autonomous is not correct, and saying that they're going to listen to citizens is a aspirational statement.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGaw. Peg Callanan.
Yes, my reality and I Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, I do not support this amendment. I certainly appreciate the appointed and elected officials' viewpoint. However, I would like to speak to the main motion when that time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen Schreiber. You there, Ellen? I think you're muted, Ellen. No, she's not muted. Well, let me go to PJ Looney, and then we'll come back to Ellen. PJ?
PJ Looney, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, just get the get the pause button ready just in case. We we are town meeting members, okay? I I speak on behalf of myself, but I also speak to a lot of people in town. And I I can appreciate people that are super focused on the environment and all electric and and so on. But the reality is this, we are a town with forty three percent of our renters challenged fiscally with rate rents going up as the yield yield curve inverts. I mean, this is where we're at. We have people, we either we build a rink and we add on all these extra requirements to the building committee that makes it expensive, that it fails, or we or we don't, right? I mean, it there shouldn't it shouldn't be that way. Put it up to the building committee, let them come up with their best option forward. But that option needs to keep in mind, it needs to be funded at some point. And if you build something and you everybody adds on and, you know, we we can put anything you want in that building. If it doesn't get built, as the selectmen said before, we're just gonna have to let it die. I don't want to let it die. So I'm not going to vote for this amendment, and I I will be in favor of the building committee. Thank you.
Thank you, BJ. But Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are fourteen people with their hands in the or in the air. Bob McLaughlin, Jack Weiss, and Michael Crowley.
I could try Ellen Schreiber. Ellen? Any way for you to join us? I guess not. Okay, Bob McLaughlin, you're next.
Bob McLaughlin, Precinct Two, Member, a member of the Warrant Committee, and one of the five has voted unfavorable action on this. May I say, I add myself to the five or six people who have already said Mr. Rubel's hot in the right place. Everything that he's talking about is absolutely a goal, should not become a requirement. This motion seems, if I may say so, Mr. Moderator, to be somewhat inconsistent, both with the history that Pat Bruce gave us of what a building committee is, and yes, it is autonomous, and inconsistent with the comments that you said, that we're not here tonight to to discuss the design of the building. That's exactly what this does. And it's not just precatory or urging. It is absolutely mandatory. It's to require in the in the first section, it's it's to instruct the design. It will be electric. It will use power and operate building devices and services. It will be designed to reduce, and it will consider as the core factor the operating costs. That's micro management. It's inconsistent with what we do. It's too many cooks in the kitchen. This should be defeated, and and I will vote consistent with my warrant committee vote, and I'll vote disfavorable unfavorable action on this.
All right. Thank you, Bob. I'm just gonna urge, I mean, people have been generally brief, but if you could really be brief, there are fifteen people in line. This is only the amendment. We haven't obviously begun to discuss the main motion. So please be brief. Jack Weiss.
Jack Weiss, Precinct One, and a member of the Warrant Committee. I was one of the members of the Warrant Committee who abstained. The reason I abstained is I didn't feel like the Warrant Committee had enough information to be able to vote yea or nay. And so what I would like to do is ask Mr. Rubel or Mr. Galante whether or not all electric skating rinks are common and have de minimis extra costs versus those rinks that might have other fuel sources to, I I guess, cool the ice surface and and heat and cool the the facility itself.
I I will call on Mr. Galante since it it does tie to the motion. It's fair to get an answer, but please be brief, Mr. Galante, because we are, we we don't want to design this thing, but it's a fair question. So, Mr. Galante.
Ted Galante, Galante Architecture Studio. So all electric ice rinks are not common. It's a it's a consideration that that should be studied. All electric buildings have larger implications that are not considered when there's an attempt to build an all electric building. We're working on a few now, and they have significant cost implications and and square footage and space implications that were not considered at the initial outset. So that's one thing about an all electric building. Energy efficiency, the building will be very energy efficient. That's the building code. The energy code requires a level of energy efficiency. So just to answer two statements that were made.
So, Mr. Moderator, if I can just follow up, then in light of those answers, I am persuaded by those who are concerned that notwithstanding the objective that we have stated in our town's energy policy, that voting for this motion might be a binding and difficult constraint for the building committee to work around. So I, too, am going to vote no.
Thank you, Jack. Mike Crowley.
Mike Crowley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and member of the school committee. I I would just say ditto to what Bob McGaw said. This building is going to be with us. This rink building, if it's constructed, is going to be with us for forty to fifty years. And, you know, in that time, you know, we're going to see some fairly tremendous challenges with respect to climate change and, you know, putting solar panels on the roof or not of this building isn't necessarily going to tilt the curve that much when it comes to climate change, but we absolutely have to start factoring these kinds of issues into every building that we construct. We have to do everything that we can to combat climate change, and we have to factor that into our building decisions. So I absolutely support. So I absolutely support this amendment. Thank you.
May I mute it here? Mr. Rubel, I think you had your hand up. We're not going to go back and forth here, but a question was asked, and I think it's fair for you to also have a brief answer. Mr. Rubel.
Yeah, thank you. I precinct five. I don't know the answer to Jack's question, but I'd ask Mark Haley to comment on what he thinks is the feasibility of a hockey rink that is all electric.
Sure. Mr. Haley, do you care to comment?
Yes, it is. It is feasible. In fact, the Mark Haley, chairman of the Yes, it is feasible. Roger is, and I know Ted has said it. It's a stretch. There's no question about it. And there are all electric rinks today. They're not as common because but the rink that we currently have is pretty much all electric today. The rooms are heated with oil, but the majority of the rink is run by electric.
Thank you. Darren Muckin.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm going to be voting.
Identify yourself.
Darren Muckin, precinct two, town meeting member. I I I'm for green energy. I'm for doing everything possible to limit what we're doing here, but I don't see how this is going to be feasible. I think this is going to be a tough sell for the town of Belmont, the pastor for that exclusion, if it does get to this point. And adding additional costs to a feature we're not sure will be efficient and will be able to manage a rink like this. There's not enough studies done. There's not enough information. It's nice to throw an amendment up here, but there's nothing that shows me that this can be done in a feasible in in a fiscal responsible way doing. So I'm voting against this amendment.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, this time town clerk. There are sixteen attendees who have their hands raised. Melissa McIntyre, Jeff Jeff Levin shares and Emily Peterson of the first three.
Great. Thank you, Melissa McIntyre.
Melissa McIntyre, precinct eight, town meeting member. I am one hundred percent in favor of all electric buildings and in favor of green energy. At the same time, I am uncomfortable with the wording of this amendment in the sense that it requires the building committee to design and construct the municipal skating rink, I'm reading here, so that the building, when completed, will be all electric. It feels that that's that this is not the right time to have this to to ask that the that the building be all electric. It feels that that, you know, I just did a quick Google search. There are all electric ice rinks. And in fact, ice rinks that are not electric are considered high users of fossil fuels. And so I think there's there's a great reason to make an all electric ice rink, but I feel that that there would be a better time to have this considered by the building committee and that to have to restrict the building committee to only think in terms of an all electric rink is going to make it hard for the building committee to do its job. So I'm leaning towards voting no on this, even though my heart absolutely rests with hoping that the rink will be all electric when it is complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff Levin share.
Hi, thanks very much. Jeff Levin shares precinct two, town meeting member. The future is buildings that aren't using fossil fuels. Operating costs as as is listed in Roger's amendment are of enormous importance and clearly operating costs are not going to be lower for a building that does that does not follow what this amendment would would have it do. And so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Emily Emily Peterson.
This is a question for you, Mr. Moderator, as the
Can you identify yourself, Emily?
Emily Peterson, precinct one. As the person that appoints this committee, I'm wondering if you are willing to commit to appointing more than one members of the energy committee to the building committee. And perhaps that will help with this concern.
I will, I I I can't. I will. Let me say this. I I haven't begun to, I have begun to consider appointments to the rink committee. But that process has only begun and there are a lot of different elements to that. But there will certainly be a, I'm not, can't commit to the number, but there will certainly be at one, at least one person who is recommended by the energy committee. And I've already begun discussions with Marty Bittner along those lines and have identified at least one individual. I can't say anymore than that, but I will say that.
Thank you.
Yes, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, town clerk. Fourteen people have their hands up and man Bob McGaw again, but he already has spoken on this motion, as you recall, and Michael McNamara and then Kenroy Kaitano would be the third person.
Great. Thank you. And man. You there, Ann? Ann?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Ann.
Oh, good. And man, precinct four. I'm supporting Roger Rubel's amendment because when it's been built, it's going to be another ten years before it happens. And by then, we're going to be so much further ahead in our solar power. Personally, I think every public building in Belmont should be net zero. A skating rink isn't going to do us a lot of good if it's underwater or on fire. Climate change is real. I'm supporting Roger Rubel's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I'm Michael McNamara.
Michael McNamara, town meeting member precinct seven. I'm sort of split on this amendment. I strongly support the idea of green energy. I strongly support the idea that more sooner rather than later, we're going to have to have all buildings in our town, or at least all government buildings probably run on mostly electric, if not all electric. So I I I do agree that there is some concern about the terminology and about sort of potential for costs. But I did want to ask the amendment's author, if you could give me just a quick word about what type of potential savings we could have over the years if we do an all electric building versus a gas boom, a gas or oil building, just very quick.
Well, we haven't designed the building, Mr. McNamara, so I don't think that's a fair question.
Sorry.
No, it's you don't need to be sorry. I just took, I just. That's fine. I mean, it's just I don't think we have the information to do that, to answer that. So we'll proceed. Ellen Schreiber, you're back.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Ellen Schreiber, town meeting member precinct eight, member of the warrant committee. I absolutely one hundred percent support the ideas behind this. I support fully electric building. I support considering operating costs. All of these things I definitely think need to be part of our projects. When Roger described this, he said that this is an amendment about core design principles. It's not. These aren't principles that you're giving the committee. They're requirements. It says at the very beginning, we're doing this in order to require of the building committee. And when you look at the first line, the building committee is instructed to do this. It is, it is a requirement. If you tie the hands of the building committee, frankly, the building committee has a lot of things they have to consider and they have to balance everything. Our building committees are already doing this. The you look at the school, it is one hundred percent electric. You look at the library, I believe it's a hundred percent electric. This isn't introducing something we're not already doing. This is telling the building committee how to do the job when there are many different demands on the building committee. The building committee will be working to do this. This is just a terrible idea to start dictating to building committees. Thanks.
Thank you, Kenroy Catano.
Kenrock Catano, precinct four. Mr. Moderator, I rise to move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Catano. All right. So is there a second? Yes, there are. So we'll go to terminate debate. How many people were in line, Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, town clerk. At the time he made the motion, it was seven people in line.
Great. Thank you. So motion to terminate debate. Open the polls and, oh, yes, if you favor termination. No, if not. And of course, this takes a two thirds. All right, a few more seconds. All right, let's show the tally, please. Close the polls. So the vote is two and two in favor, twenty four opposed, obviously two thirds. So we'll scroll. And then in a moment, we will vote on Mr. Rubel's amendment. And then, once the amendment is disposed with either way, we then return to the discussion of the main motion, as amended or not. All right. Thank you. So the final total on terminating debate, two oh two in favor, twenty four opposed. We now go to a vote on the amendment itself. So I stress, this is a vote on Roger Rubel's amendment that we've been discussing, not on the original motion, but on the amendment itself. So we'll open the poll, the polls. A few more seconds here. We, Belmont media is now with us. All right, let's close the polls and show the tally. So the amendment eighty three in favor, one hundred and thirty five oppose, twelve abstentions. So let's show the, let's go a little slower this time since it was a lot of debate on this. We're going to take a brief break for the court stenographer momentarily after this vote is finalized and then obviously come back to the main motion for the final action of twenty twenty two town meeting. All right. Thank you. So for the record, eighty three in favor, one hundred and thirty five opposed, twelve abstentions. So the motion is defeated. So we'll take a brief break. When we come back, we will be debating the main motion with no amendment since the amendment was defeated. So thank you. See you momentarily. So thank you. See you momentarily. All right, shall we resume? All right, welcome back. So this is the motion before us, the main motion under Article eight. And so now we'll begin discussion of the main motion. And Ellen, how many hands do we have up?
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are twelve people with their hands raised. Roger Fusa, Judy Feins, and Ellen Schreiber are the first three on the main motion.
Thank you, Roger Fusa, here first.
Roger Fusa, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would also like to thank Mr. Haley and the Preliminary Rink Design Committee and the Rink Financing Committee for all of its hard work. Excellent people are involved in an effort to replace a very decrepit facility that, to say the least, has not put Belmont's best foot forward. I think the rink needs to be replaced. In the future, I'd be happy to help with corporate fundraising for a new rink. I've got experience doing corporate fundraising from my time as Director of Development for Historic Newton, a public-private partnership between the City of Newton and the Newton Historical Society. In agreeing on needing to replace a rink, I turned to the question of timing for forming a design committee. In summary, I believe further rink design work should fall within the scope of an updated master plan for Belmont and not precede it. I will explain. Belmont's ten-year master plan expired in 2020. Here's its first sentence. The Belmont Comprehensive Plan is a framework to guide future decisions and policies governing a wide range of land use-related issues in Belmont. Next, language from the article under consideration. Committee to enter into contracts and take all actions necessary to carry out said project, subject to funding. I question whether creating this committee tonight creates such momentum that a rink will have to be built right away, regardless of other priorities and considerations. I have no doubt a building committee will develop strong plans. Logically, however, these plans should proceed from a master plan and not precede it, as plans for a large, long-term investment can be considered under a long-term comprehensive and strategic framework. The master plan allows you to create such a framework. It matches goals to current projected resources. The planning necessitates weighing trade-offs and assessing needs and wants. I believe in aspirational plans, but ultimately, as I heard at former employer, hope is not a business strategy. I serve on the town's Division Twenty One Implementation Committee, which necessarily has a broad, long-term focus. Before the pandemic, the committee met with Adam Dash. Thank you very much, Adam, to discuss the critical need to create an updated master plan. Shortly before the pandemic, the Select Board formed a committee to update the master plan. As far as I know, the Master Plan Refresh Committee has never met, and I do not know if a timetable exists for when it will begin its work. The hockey rink needs to be replaced. The library needs to be replaced. The town needs to avoid going over fiscal cliff. These are all important priorities, among others, but we need to weigh priorities relative to each other. Let's not put the cart before the horse. Instead, let's pause creating this committee until Master Plan Refresh Committee's work is well underway. You can find the expired master plan on the town's website, but you'll need to dig. To make it easier, you can use the link I created, r-fusa.com/np. M for master, P for plan. Thank you for listening and working hard with me to serve and represent Belmont and its citizens.
Right, thank you, Roger. Judy Feins, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Judy Feins, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I rise, at least in spirit, to raise two serious questions about this article. I am concerned at the effort to fast-track replacement of the skating rink. We should not be establishing a permanent building committee at this time with the clear and announced intent of placing it on the ballot for debt exclusion in November.
Ms. Feins.
I'm not speaking, Mr. Moderator, I am not speaking about that. Please let me continue.
Yes, but that is off scope, so please continue.
First, there are process issues. The latest material made available on the Preliminary Rink Design Committee's town website dates from January 2022 and indicates the issuance of a request for design services. Meeting minutes and Mr. Galante's presentation make it clear that there is a feasibility study draft already, and perhaps some cost analyses. But these materials have not been posted, although that is legally required, and they do not appear to be available to the public in general or to town meeting members in particular. When the town undertakes a major capital project, it typically follows a sequence of feasibility, design studies, and cost studies, as Pat Bruch so well described. There is always public review of these deliverables. There is always the chance for the public to look at the products of the work, and there is always at least one public hearing before a warrant article is drafted and presented for town meeting action. Under the Preliminary Rink Design Committee, this process has not been followed. Even their public meeting held on April seventh, although it discussed the materials, did not provide them for review. The other process question is this. What makes the building committee work with the school committee and select board? As there is language in the motion, once formed, it appears that they can do what they choose. This reveals the critical timing issue. It, of course, is up to the select board to make a separate decision about the debt exclusion. But going, getting there appears to be the central intent of the point of making, building, of setting up a permanent building committee at this time. Please understand that I am not opposed to replacing the skating rink. One of my sons played hockey, and my family enjoyed skating together there. But I am against fast-tracking any large project in a way that flouts public process and leads to insufficiently informed decisions, especially under a purported emergency. This is how the skating rink process appears to be going, and that is why I'm voting no, and I urge you to vote no. But if we approve this article, will you be watching and involved all summer to make sure that clarity and transparency and prudence reign? If we approve this article, we town meeting members must all do that to make sure there is no rush to hasty judgment and action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Ellen Schreiber.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Ellen Schreiber, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. I strongly support this motion, and I really hope everyone else does as well. Everything that people have said thus far explains exactly why we need a building committee. The building committee is the body that answers questions. The building committee is the body that works with the public to figure out all of the input. The building committee is the one that analyzes costs and puts together designs. The project at the moment has completed feasibility. It is more than halfway through schematic design. This needs to get to a building committee in order to finish the job, and it needs to be done by a building committee, not by a temporary-appointed committee. So I think this is why we need to do it. Just a couple of comments reacting to things people have said. This project being fast-tracked, the Underwood Pool was another project that was fast-tracked. They're small projects, it's, they're simple buildings, simple facilities, and it doesn't require two years to develop a schematic design for something as simple as a pool or a rink. It is absolutely vital that people be involved, but that's the point of the building committee. Finally, in terms of the master plan, there was a master plan created in 2000. It was a list of thirteen projects that needed to be done. They were buildings that needed to either have big renovations or be replaced. We have, at this point, done eleven of those projects. There are exactly two left, the library and the rink. This is our opportunity to complete a master plan that we put in place twenty years ago. Believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Another Ellen.
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are nineteen people with their hands up. Roger Rubel, Dan Stevens, and Ada Baptista are the first three.
Roger, you're up.
Hi. Let's see.
I identify yourself, Roger.
Roger Rubel, Precinct Five. So I support appointing the building committee. What I'm concerned about is this west, west, the fields next to it. So my question is, if the, if the building is built, the expanded building is built where it is, would that impinge on the existing fields? And then I may have a follow-up, so.
Well, we're not discussing where the building is built, because we don't know where it's gonna be built.
I'm asking, I'm asking a hypothetical question. If the building, if the building were to be built, can, it's for Mr. Galant, I think. If the building were to be built in its present location, would it impact the fields?
I'll allow it, Roger, but we're moving into territory that is subjective. So, Mr. Galante.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ted Galante, Galante Architecture Studio. Any work that is done west of Harris Fields on any type of ice rink will have impact on fields because they're adjacent to one another. I suppose that's the clearest way to answer that.
Well, I mean, that isn't my question. My question is, will the building footprint impinge on the fields?
I see. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that entirely.
Okay. I wasn't clear, I think.
All right, so that follow-up question for the record was Roger Rubel, and then Ted, please.
Galante Architecture. So there are ways of designing it that it would not impinge on the fields.
Thank you. Stan Stevens?
Thank you.
Dan? You there, Dan? See, muted? Oh, we'll come back to you, Dan. Ada Baptista?
Ada Baptista, Town Meeting, Precinct Three. Currently, I'm supportive of a building committee for the rink. We need to work in town to improve our buildings and, and not let them get to the state that they are in, like this, and other buildings in town. My, I guess, common question is around the, you know, I know we're not allowed to talk about anything outside about this section of the committee, but the presentations we heard today from Select Board, from others, talked about a timeline, and that timeline felt very aggressive to me. And I'm just trying to understand what assurances that we have as town meeting members that when this committee is formed, that there's gonna be, you know, ample due diligence performed, and that we're gonna take the time that's necessary to do this building right the first time. Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure who could answer that question, but I'll.
I'm happy, I'm happy. Yes, Mr. Palolo is gonna.
My, my, my fellow chair, the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large, thank you for that question, Ada. The Select Board, I said this at the beginning of the discussion here, would never put a, consider any sort of movement forward with a debt exclusion unless they felt completely comfortable with the project in that it's been complete. All issues have been addressed. School committee has approved it. Select Board has approved it from a site perspective, that the fields have begun its design. If we did that, we would know it would fail. And so clearly, understand full well the timing issue, and I said it's gonna be a real challenge to get to where we need to get to by August first. We need to form the building committee now, so that if we can't get there by August first, we certainly will be in place to continue the momentum and put a debt exclusion, consider a debt exclusion for the spring of next year. So, Mr. Baptista, I would never vote for putting something on the ballot that I didn't believe was fully baked, was ready to move forward, was a complete project, had sufficient input from the community, had support from the school committee, had support from my colleagues on the Select Board. So you have my assurance that, in fact, that will all take place. Whether we get there by August first or not, unclear. But certainly, if we don't, we have movement towards a consideration for spring of next year. Thank you.
I appreciate that response, Mr. Bro. I'm just very still concerned that August first is even discussed. It does not seem that this committee can be formed and, and actually get to that in time, so just.
Yeah, but we're not.
Very, very concerned about that, sir.
Okay, but we're not discussing August first, so.
But he did, though.
He mentioned that that was a possibility, but any case, because I was, all right, let's proceed. Thank you, Ada. Dan Stevens. Ah, no. Let's try Michael McNamara.
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, I'm gonna recommend to Dan Stevens that he avail himself of the Q and A team by typing in his question that way, so we make sure he gets in his question answered.
Great, thank you, Ellen.
Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven?
Yes, Michael.
Okay. I, I think that I can understand the focus of this, this, the rink definitely has a lot of problems. I definitely think that trying to establish a building committee to talk about this issue and sort of do more planning is probably advisable. I would hope that if we are supporting this, if we support this motion, this article, that Mr. Galante and the Select Board work really hard, preferably with the, the, the original amendment author as well, to make sure this building is as close to net zero as possible, and also to make sure that it is ADA compliant. So I think those are two very important needs, to make sure that everyone can have access to the building, and to make sure that it would be efficient, especially because the costs long-term are something that we should consider with transition to an energy source that does not constantly go up and down in price, as inflation had been mentioned earlier. But I just want to ask the, the, I just want to support this motion, but hope that the amendment's author and the Mr. Galante and the Select Board will work together and make sure that everything is accessible and clean energy and just accessible for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Ellen, who we have in line, how many? You're mute.
Oh, thank you very much. Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are twenty-three people in line. Let's see, Megan Moriarty, Adam Dash are the first two, and Ellen Sugarman is third.
All right, obviously with twenty-three in line, please be as brief as you can. Meg Moriarty, go ahead.
Meg Moriarty, whoops. Oh, yeah, I'm unmuted. Meg Moriarty, School Committee Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to clarify three things that were stated. I would like to say that the minutes are up to date through May on the town website, not through January. I also wanted to reassure people, there was the statement that the building committee might not work with the schools and the Select Board. There has been, and I believe will be, appointees from the Select Board and the school committee on, on this committee. So there is that commitment to making sure that the building committee is working with the schools as well as the Select Board. And I also just wanted to reassure individuals that there already has been quite a bit of discussion about ensuring that there are multiple public forums in the plans over the next weeks to come, to make sure that there's a lot of public input for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Adam Dash.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Dash, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Just want to corroborate and assure people that I agree fully with what Chair Palillo just said, that whether to put the rink debt exclusion on the ballot in November is completely separate from whether to pass Article A and eight or not. And the Select Board has said that if the rink scheme and cost estimates are ready in time, it would discuss whether to put it on the ballot, and if they're not, then it wouldn't. So, I mean, that's sort of the situation that we find ourselves in. If you look at the language of the revised motion that's in front of you today, there's a lot of, there's involvement by the school committee, the school department, and the Select Board deliberately built in there to keep the lines of communication open. And as Chair Moriarty just said, we fully expect that members of those committees will actually serve on this building committee, along with a member of the Warren Committee and such. So, and as the moderator stated earlier, I believe we created that, the library building committee years ago, and it's still not on the ballot. So this is basically the first step forward in a process, and maybe it'll be on the ballot in November if it's ready. Maybe it won't if it's not, but we can't get anywhere with the rink if we don't create the committee tonight. So I hope you will join me in voting yes on Article eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Ellen Sugarman.
Ellen Sugarman, Precinct Eight. I move.
Ellen Sugarman, Precinct Eight. I move the question.
So Ellen Sugarman has... How many Ellen in line before they?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. There are 20 total people, including Ellen, in line.
All right, thank you. Is there a second on Ellen Sugarman's motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, there are. So the motion to terminate debate has been made, and so we'll open the polls to vote. Favorite the termination, obviously vote yes, otherwise no. So the... No one may has joined us, so wait a few more seconds here. All right, let's close the polls and show the tally, please. So the final vote is 196 in favor, 23 opposed, 10 abstentions. Obviously, it passes. Let's take some time on the scrolling. While they're doing that, I will be beginning in earnest as early as tomorrow morning to begin conversations with various groups, the Permanent Building Committee and so forth, to put together a building committee. I take lots of consultation. I don't do this willy-nilly. In my tenure, I've formed probably five or six building committees on behalf of town meeting, and I take it very seriously. And so I will begin on earth tomorrow. If any individual would like to be considered, please send me an email and explain. You can also submit it on the website, but explain your particular expertise and interests. There will always be more demand for people wanting to participate than slots. So I'll have to make some decisions, of course. But I did want to let people know that I will begin the process quickly, but it will not happen overnight. So with that, the final tally, 196 in favor, 23 opposed, 10 abstention. Motion's passed. We now turn to the dissolving move that the annual town meeting be dissolved. So thank you all. This has been a long, arduous town meeting of seven nights, but it's been really very constructive, I think. Obviously, a lot of emotions about different issues, but the discourse has been largely civil, and we all appreciate that. Great participation, more participation on these issues than I remember in any other town meeting, and I think that's very positive. And so we'll see if there's a special town meeting in the fall and whether... I hope it's in person, but we'll see. Thank you.
Hosts of UAE and other countries that are banning it.
It's not the first time a Disney film hasn't been shown in cinemas around the world. Last year, Pixar's Onward was reportedly banned by several Middle Eastern countries because of a minor reference to lesbian parents. And Marvel's Doctor Strange in the Multiverse of Madness